I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, September 26, 2016, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were a few items in the table file.
Yes, we have several items in the table file. There are additional personnel items, including appointments, increase, decrease, and changes in assignment, or resignation. We also have some additional information on the National Merit semifinalists and commended scholars.
Okay. If there's no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes from the regular school board meeting held on Monday, September 12, 2016. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Fritz. Is there a second? Second by Margaret. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, September 12, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman.
Yes, we have one announcement this evening. Last spring, middle school principal Greg Jellino and assistant principal Michael O'Keefe encouraged middle school students to participate in the Minnesota Hispanic Bar Association essay contest on the topic Latinos in Minnesota. I'm proud to announce that one of our middle school students, Lupema Salis Castillo, is one of the award recipients of a $250 to $1,000 scholarship. And although they did not win, the following students also participated in the essay contest and are now invited to meet and greet with Justice Sonia Sotomayor, which is a pretty cool deal, on October 18. And these students are Jennifer Boudreau, Satali Valdez, Johan Rodriguez Vasquez, Angel Gomez, Lizzie Conde Acosta, Anel Baroas Valasquez, Gabriela Gaspar Benitez, and Esmeralda Lazaro. So that is a pretty cool deal to get to meet with a Supreme Court justice. So congratulations to Ms. Castillo, the winner, and then also the other students as well.
Excellent. Wow. Okay, so any other thing anyone else would like to add in terms of announcements or recognition? So we'll move on now to our next item on the agenda, which is the first time that it's appearing, which is committee reports. And as you recall, we had put in place the opportunity for board members to just do brief committee reports. As you know, as board members, we serve on a number of different committees as school board liaison. And so at the suggestion of Board Member Hardy, we've implemented this. And I think it's a great way for the board to hear what some of our important subcommittee work is being done. So we have actually three committee reports tonight. We'll begin with Rob Hardy.
Okay, I've got reports from two of the committees. The two committees I regularly meet with, the Human Rights Commission, which is a city commission, but we have a school board liaison, and the District Youth Council. During the teacher workshop day on September 1st, members of the Human Rights Commission, including one of the adults Larry Fowler, and the youth members Kaiza Johnson and Jack Cuddy, and the DYC co-chair Gabby Estrada led a workshop on responding to bias incidents in the schools. And Jack also presided over a really good youth-led community celebration of the UN International Day of Peace last Wednesday, September 21st. And I should say that there were two celebrations of the International Day of Peace on Tuesday and on Wednesday. And they were very, there was a very good youth presence of students from the Northfield Public Schools. There was art and poetry and performances by students from the schools. It was really great. Meanwhile, the DYC is creating videos of all of the school board candidates and organizing a candidate forum. So four of us and two other people will be participating in those.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Rob? Yes, Margaret, how was it in the rain? Wasn't it raining heavily on the day?
It hadn't started to rain yet, so it was like an hour before the rain started, so we got it in just in time.
Perfect. Excellent. And I understand the poet laureate, also known as Board Member Hardy, had a wonderful poem that he presented at the festivities as well.
I forgot to mention that the artwork and the poems that the students presented on Tuesday night are in the Northfield Arts Guild through October, so if you want to see that.
Okay, the next committee report is Ellen Iverson.
Sure, so I just reported on the Community Services Advisory Council, which is the committee appointment that I'm on that meets during the summer. And I just wanted to highlight some really fantastic numbers because I get to hear these, you know, we meet every month, so I get to hear all this stuff every month. And we, as a board, only get to see Erin come forward a few times a year. So the, really great numbers. So Greenville Park Community School had increased attendance. So you can see the numbers right here in the report, but 481 elementary, 86 middle school, 105 high school, and 380 community members. And I just think it's amazing what the community school has done. And the range of programming that they offer, not just academic, but the immunization and dental clinics and the food options. So kudos to that Catherine Lozado and Laura Berdal, who I know that Erin, you're spearheading everything, but the two of them have really just done wonderful, wonderful work there. And then in terms of the recreation program, also some really great numbers. And the all-comers track meet I thought was really amazing, that has gone up by so many participants this year that they don't know what they're going to do next year to try to make it better. But also more scholarships, so we're meeting people's needs. And the last piece is the Summer Blast and Summer Plus program, which I think some board members hear about through the open house. But one of the pieces that I wanted to highlight is that with the middle school program, that rising ninth graders, if they had 80% attendance, they actually got a half a credit towards high school. So there was a significant incentive there, so.
Excellent, thank you. Questions for Ellen?
And I'll be presenting the last committee report, which is a committee I serve on Schools for Equity and Education. And Dr. Hillman and I actually attended the general membership meeting in October, or I'm sorry, in September. And there were two presentations that were extremely interesting. One was by Dr. David Heistad. He's the Director of Assessment for Bloomington Public Schools. And he had presented a number of different accountability measures, et cetera. But I thought what was really interesting was his work on focusing on a student's GPA as an indicator of post-secondary success. So that was really interesting to see his work there. And then we also heard a presentation by Dr. Bill Morris, who is a leading public opinion pollster. And always fun for me because he was actually my political science professor at the University of Minnesota when I was there. And he was actually the reason I chose political science because he's super engaging and really knowledgeable. But anyway, he had shared with us the results of some polling that he had done. Although it was two weeks late, or two weeks had passed and some things had shifted and he was focusing on some of the political arena at this point. But really, for our information, it was most, in most applicable for us is some of the work he did around surveying the state in terms of education issues. And it was extremely interesting. Two things, three things that he found. Our state overall has substantial support. So 70% of those polled actually supported a guaranteed minimum increase to the general fund formula that would be tied to inflation. Yes, so I see Val's ears perking up over there.
That would make us happy.
That would make us very happy. So people really understood that, you know, the general fund formula, what, you know, significant that would be to schools if it was actually tied to inflation. So that was really interesting. The other interesting one was there was two-to-one support for an automatic renewal of existing school referenda. So if you were just going out and not increasing the referenda, you could, wouldn't need to do that, that they would just automatically renew rather than having to be voted or approved. So that was interesting. And the other, what other one did I have? I think those are the two most significant ones that he had. Other than that, the state has continued its increase, or continues to support education as a major issue for our state. Then Brad Lindell, actually the Executive Director of CE, presented the CE's 2017 legislative platform, which we will see at another point in the meeting. But just to give you a preview of the messages that we will be giving legislators in terms of really focusing the message for the upcoming session will be debt service equalization and an increase to the general fund formula of at least 3% in each of the next two years. So we always appreciate CE and what they do, and their meetings are always really informative. So is there any questions? Margaret?
For the, when he says our state has substantial, substantial support based on polling, can you tell me more about who was polled and was it a, was it a pretty good sample? Was it voters or legislators or?
Well, it was just, it was Minnesota, it was Minnesota citizens in general.
Voters.
But one thing that was interesting is he is able to include both cell and landlines. And I'm not exactly sure, I did look back on his report to see what the sample size was, but that wasn't indicated, so I could sure get that from Dr. Morris.
I think the other piece that was really interesting is that he has, their firm, Morris Leatherman, has a trick that creates a very low rejection rate. So, you know, when a lot of people might call you, there might be some hurdles. It could be that the person on the phone may not, English might not be their first language, so the pollsters may not have someone who speaks that language. It could be that they don't have callbacks or things like that. And so compared to other opinion polls, the Morris Leatherman routinely has a much lower rate of rejection, which provides more confidence in the numbers. And it's a truly randomized, you know, sample survey. So they have been really routinely sought after as one of the more effective polling groups in Minnesota. And he has, and the other piece that's really interesting is he does have trend data over years. You know, they've asked the same questions over a number of years. And I mean, you could, and I believe that, you know, since we are a CE district, I think if you go to the CE website, you can actually watch those presentations.
Yeah, I actually had put that in my notes and I forgot to mention that actually if you go to CE's website, both Dr. Heistad and Dr. Morris's presentations are there. And I think they were really interesting. So if you have the opportunity to see them, I know Deb Griffiths just posted those. So excellent, okay. So we will move on. So the committee reports, we will have once a month. The second meeting of the month, so it would be the October 24th board meeting that we would be having committee reports again. Okay, excellent. So we will move on now to items for discussion and reports. And our first discussion is Q-Comp application. Dr. Hillman.
Yes, and I've asked Mr. Goodray, Ray Goodray, Representative from the Northfield Education Association, to step to the podium again. And he's going to walk through the draft plan that we included in your packet. And again, the key being that it's a draft, there's been a lot of work done on it by a number of people within the association. And just to provide more detail. And then in addition, we have a couple of teachers who are on the committee here tonight who, after we walk through the plan, are going to have an opportunity to share with you their previous experience working in districts where Q-Comp was a reality. And then in addition, Kim Bruski, our Director of Technology Services, she was also a staff member in Farmington when they adopted Q-Comp. So I've asked Kim to also share her experience of transitioning to Q-Comp as well. So what we're going to try to give you is where the draft plan is at this point. Ray will walk us through that. Then we have our invited guests who will share their firsthand personal point of view on what Q-Comp meant to them as a professional. Then you'll be able to certainly ask any questions that you have at this point. And remember, we've got two pieces with Q-Comp tonight. We have, this is the initial share of the application with you, the plan. And then later, under the items for individual action, we'll ask you to consider the letter of intent. And as we said before, we'll get to that then, but the letter of intent is not binding. It just simply says to the state, "We are going forward with more significant effort," for lack of a better term. So Ray, would you kind of start walking us through the plan and?
Sure. Thanks for having me back here. People are going to start talking if I show up anymore. But anyways, I want to talk first of all about the October deadline because I know that you feel some pressure there. And I want to say that if we don't make that deadline, we'll deal with that. It'll be fine. The thing about the October 15th deadline is that there is a statutory requirement, if we make that deadline, that they have to reply within 30 days. But it doesn't say that if we were later than that, that they can't still work with us. I guess the next deadline would be January 15th. And if that's the way it goes, then that's the way it goes. So if you feel uneasy and you feel pressure, then you probably want to relieve that because you're going to want to make a good decision on how we move forward. So I just want to put that out there. So I'll walk through the plan, and you all have a copy of this in your file, exactly what we're going through. So I think maybe what I'd like to do is look at each section, and I'll kind of give you a little bit of information and maybe ask, do you want to do questions per section, or do you want to do questions at the end?
I would imagine that maybe if someone has a clarifying question about a particular, you know, portion, they could ask it, but general, overall program questions, we can wait till the end.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, let's see if I can figure out this laser pointer here. Sweet. Okay. The first piece here is the career ladder positions, and it talks about eligibility. We're not going to hire someone from outside. We're looking for someone that's already in the district, that's continuing contract, so that means they'll have to have at least that much experience. We talked about this, each section here for these positions is going to talk about, what are your responsibilities, who's on that? So you can see membership, then responsibilities under the advisory committee. And then as you go down, there's a term. How long is the term? Is there a term limit? And then what is the remuneration for that position? So they are all kind of divided up into those individual pieces. So for instance, the very first one here would be a Q-Comp advisory committee. And this would be, basically this is like the school board of this piece. They do all of the administration piece, they do all the oversight. They help to file the papers, they help to evaluate the program and that sort of thing. They'll meet monthly. We did build that in. That is a monthly during the school day. And we talked about, one of the roles of the administrator, the administrators that would be on there, we'd have a secondary principal and elementary principal, and a representative of the superintendent. And the role there would be basically to help make sure that when we pick those days, they line up with days where we're not, you know, if we know something's happening at Greenville Park, we don't want to interrupt that with this. Or if we know that there's training at the middle school, we don't want to take subs away from those kinds of things. And then just kind of oversight on keeping us informed about buildings, maybe the building goals that have been set and how that process goes. So there'll be members from each site. A site in Q-Comp is defined as, in our situation, would be basically every building. And then there would also be the Director of the Program, which I'll refer to in a minute here. And then it just goes down and talks about, you know, what they do. They're going to assist the coordinator in doing the review, filing the paperwork every year with the state, and making sure that we're compliant. As we go down here to D is the District Coordinator. This is the only position that would be release time. And this one is a full-time release position. And that's done varying ways throughout the state. In some places, they have it halftime. And then the other half of that is like the Association President. We didn't feel like we wanted to tie those two together because we don't think that necessarily the qualifications that would make you good at being one would make you good at being the other. So we didn't want to put those together. And quite frankly, we feel like this is going to be a lot of work because the coordinator is going to be someone who interacts with the district as part of being on like DPAC to help with those pieces. They're going to have to work with individual, each of the individual buildings and all of the personnel at those buildings to make sure that paperwork is filed in a timely manner and that sort of thing. And all that's outlined in the responsibilities piece right here. Notice that they worked on the program review, and they also have, this last line is pretty heavy, additional responsibilities required by legislation and plan documents. So basically, anything that's required, they're responsible for. And that would go a little bit along the lines of what Dr. Hillman does for us on a district level. It'd be a two-year term. They can apply for subsequent terms. They are evaluated. Every position is evaluated. We don't have the evaluation documents here, but we have rubrics available from other schools that we will use. And it's basically, you know, are the things that you're doing compliant? And are you meeting the timelines? And you're evaluated by the people that you serve in each and every case. So this position would be evaluated by all of the site leaders and the things under them, much like the 360 kind of thing that you were talking about when you were referring to Dr. Hillman's evaluation last week, as a matter of fact. At every site, there'd be two, oh, that is a full-time release position. We also added a $10,000 stipend on top of that. And there's two reasons for that. That person is, first of all, we want someone to, who is qualified, to be willing to step out. And that, part of that is an incentive to step into this role, which has a lot of responsibility, and to step away from the classroom for two years. And a big part of it is because there's a lot of summer work and you're organizing training. They would be coming to these meetings to fill you in on things. They would have to have meetings outside of the school day, outside of what would normally be required of a teacher. So that's a combination of things that we thought needed to be done. Then we get down here to the site leaders. There are two at each building. And as far as their responsibilities, the site leaders work, we would have, one of them would have to be a member of the district level committee. So they would be sort of a liaison from the building to the district-level Q-Comp group. And then both of them would oversee the plan as far as making sure that the different people within the sites are taking care of what they need to do. So they might also pitch in on some of the observation pieces. So there you have, you know, supporting the efforts of the building instructional leaders, which we'll talk about next. Making sure that the proficiency ratings from the observations are all filed and taken care of in a timely fashion. Working with classroom teachers and supporting them on strategies. So if a teacher is trying to find a resource to do whatever it is their PLC is trying to do, then this person would be responsible for helping with that. They're also working with, oh, one of them would be on the building level committee that sets goals. I know it's the SIT, I believe, at the middle school. And it's like the TLC or something like that at Bridgewater or Greenville. They have different names, but whoever sets those goals to try to get, make sure that they work within the, within the framework of what's required by the state. This is also a way to get more licensed teachers involved in those committees and give, to incent that as well. So as they go along, they're working with some of the professional development pieces. Something just happened. Oh, I see what I did. They're working with also with the professional development pieces within the building. And they would work with the probationary teachers and mentors, making sure that they're having the support that they need. That's a two-year term. They can apply for subsequent terms and obviously contingent on their evaluation being positive. The release time is really dependent upon, that's the, this is the one, these guys will be one day a month, so it'll be nine days. Whichever one is, just the one of them, whichever one is on the building level or the district level committee. I feel very scattered right now. I apologize for that, if it's coming off that way. Stipend is about $1,800. We're trying to, we went around on that. None of these work out hourly to like how much time we think it's going to be because we think it'll be more time than that. But we do believe that that is enough to kind of, again, incent people to be a part of this initiative. The building instructional leaders, this is where a lot of the work is done. They work within the PLC groups. This is a one-to-seven ratio, so seven teachers, one building instructional leader. And they would work to make sure that PLCs have goals that fall under the guidelines. So they're SMART goals, and they're dealing with students' achievement. And then they would also work with the timelines. They would also have summer training involved to work, to learn how to evaluate or to observe and to give feedback. The building instructional leaders would be the ones who, they would go to the classrooms and do the teacher observations. And they would provide the feedback, and they would provide the ratings on that. The release time for that is in the budget, but I believe that is seven days. And we came up with that by thinking that if they're going to observe three times during the year, they would have two days each of those cycles. And then we built one extra day in there just in case because the schedules aren't always bound to fit. And if you think about one-to-seven ratio, you should be able to get all of the teachers of year seven observed within a certain amount of days. And then also then there's a day to provide for a little leeway there. So they might on day one do observations for half of them and maybe the write-ups. And they also have to meet with the teachers again during other times to go over the results. So going down here, then the remuneration for that is the $2,400 bucks. That, anytime they're gone, they would have, obviously, lesson plans they have to make. There's a lot of paperwork they have to deal with. They have to deal with all the goals within all of the PLCs. They also have to do their own PLC work on top of that. So that's, we thought that that was the one position that probably needed the most. And you'll see an hourly rate, you'll see how it kind of stacks up hourly in a little bit here, too. The mentors, this one's a little bit flexible because we don't know how many new teachers we might have. Maybe it's this year and we have 60 new teachers, and maybe it's another year where we have 10. Hopefully, it's not 60 for the sake of Molly and her group. So anyways, the mentors, we thought the ratio should be about one mentor per three mentees. And the remuneration for that would be $800. It would be, that would provide for the training that they would do in the summer or outside of the school time. And then there's another couple hundred dollars, I think. I'm kind of going off memory on that. Yeah, then the other $200 per mentee is really the time on task with that mentee in the meetings that they would have throughout the year. And the mentors' duties are really standard for what you would think a mentor would do. It could be anything from, you know, here's the copy machine. You go ask Mrs. Clark for this, and you go ask, you know, Joel Lear for this. And it could be coming into their classroom, observing them, giving them some feedback extra above and beyond what they would normally get. And it could be some cognitive coaching pieces in there, too. So it's really, truly a mentor. And the beauty of this is it being built in. We don't have to worry about two years from now, oh, well, we don't have money for mentors. It's built into this program. So going down here, let's see. We talked about these, this little note at the bottom was my, our notes as we were working. And I don't know if it's on your copy, but basically the startup costs, we talked a little bit about that a while ago. That's really kind of, it's the one somewhat hidden cost that I'm not sure about how that might roll out. There is certain training that's already happening. You guys probably do TDE training. So it would mean we'd need to roll in our group initially. It might be some cost involved in those pieces as far as that initial training. After that, it's all, it would all be part of the costs that are under the Q-Comp funding. And then, oh yeah, then this one right here at the bottom here. This was a question that we had just left there, and our thought was... And our thought was, after, if they decide to do it a second term, it doesn't seem logical, but it might help us to attract the very best candidate if you knew that, hey, going in, if I'm gonna put in all this work on this program and I do a good job, can I still come back and do what I was doing before? So that's something for you to consider as we get way down the road, but we wanted to put it out there now. So now, we're looking at, this document here is hiring and evaluation. And there are still things to be fleshed out in this particular one. But basically, we thought the people who had written the plan should be the people, we have the vision, so the group, the design group that put this all together should probably do the initial hiring along with some advisement from district representatives. So, we would hire the initial coordinator, then they would, then we would start them in the process, and they would help us hire then the site leaders, and then the site leaders would help hire the people that would be working sort of with them, and it kind of cascades downwards, that's what this document's all about. And then after the first year, then it would be, you know, it would be those people in those positions that are remaining that would do the hiring as you go forward. Anyone, of course, who's on the design group who wanted to be a part of the actual process would not be part of the hiring process, if that makes any sense. So that's what this article kind of goes around. And then, the evaluation of the career ladder positions. This, this is the part, and I don't know, are yours color, this is red down here, number three in my, what I would have for my copy. It's not light gray pieces, really just pieces we need to, we need to fill in. We have, I guess, as I said, we have rubrics available from, actually, from Gina's district and from Kelly's, Gina and Kelly's former districts. By the way, Gina and Kelly were incredible members of this, of this thing, and they, Gina, you came from St. Louis Park, is that right? And Kelly came from Montgomery, and they're both Q-COMP districts. And whenever we were struggling with how we could do it, we would just kind of go to them and say, what did you do here, and what did you do here? And they inevitably had different sort of paths that they took to get to these things. For instance, they both have the rubrics, they're a little bit different, but for evaluating the people that are doing all that. So, we have these pieces in place, and when it says insert rating, it's, it would be, they have to do a good job. But I couldn't remember how they rated those when I was putting this together, when I was writing just this last piece. It's a little marker to remind me later. So, this just outlines who evaluates who, and the idea is basically, if I am, let's say, a building instructional leader, then the people who I work with are going to have input on that, and the people that I work sort of under are gonna have input on that. Again, it's, we tried to look at a 360 kind of model for that. I'm gonna move down to the salary schedule reform, and the note at the top, I had already shared with you before. Our understanding from the state is that you don't have to change the schedule, you just have to change the way that you move. And that's what this is about, just as a reminder of what I had shared before. So the reform is basically saying you have to get effective or higher on two of three formative evaluations. And then, there is a way for you to remediate that. So if you do that on the next two in the next year, then you're able to move. And that, the whole process is really about growth. Because if you don't, you know, if you don't do essentially effective or better on two out of three this year, and then two out of three next year, then, then that's kind of a problem. And by that point, the administration should, if they're, and I believe they are doing their job, if they're doing their job, they should probably have figured that out as well. So there is a firewall between this, we don't share this information with administration. We don't want to put teachers in a position where they're, where they're trying to or have to do the job of an administrator, because that's a little bit above our pay grade. Performance pay is, the percentage is here, so there's no number total here because of the way the budget is put together, which I'll share later, but I did tell this before. You pay all of the positions that are career ladder, and then you take what's left and you divide it up among the FTE. And then, these percentages represent what part of that. So if that number is, let's say, $2,000, then this would be 55, 10, and 25, and 10% of that. So let's talk a little deeper about those. So, the first one is the professional learning community, student growth and reflection. That's a big part of, of our district culture, so it's a fairly large part of our performance pay piece. And this basically takes, and, once you set your growth goal and you go through the process, if your students, if you go through the process, and your students don't reach their growth goal, you've still gone through the process, there's still a reflective piece, and the idea is to reset and go, well, I didn't, and why didn't I, and what do I do next? What do we do if they don't learn, is one of the essential questions. And that, that's why this percentage, this 25%, is divided up the way it is. So if you do meet your student growth goal, then, and you go through the process, then you get the entire 25%. That's what that paragraph A is all about. Paragraph B, student engagement reflection, not much changes here. This is really just a recognition of the fact that you're putting in the work to deal with that, to put together the survey or to find the survey that the district offers, there's two different ways you can go there. You're going through the process and you're reflecting on it. You know, what do you do with that information once you find out that, you know, this is the perception with students? So that's basically the student engagement reflection that we currently do with TDE, and it's just a piece of that rolled into here. The observation process, this would be the three period observations. And we really went around on this one, because we, with the observation process, we wanted to have, we really wanted to focus on growth. That was, everything we did was, how can we encourage teachers to grow, to professionally, and basically to reflect, and to have a reflective practice, because that's where we're gonna get the most power out of this. So, we have a process where they have three observations, they need to reach a certain rating for those three. Effective is the rating, two out of three have to be effective. And if their first, let's see, how does this go? So if your first two are not effective, and your third one is, that we felt showed growth, and you could ask for a fourth to see how that goes, and still earn this piece. If your first two were effective and you went down, then we didn't feel like there should be an opportunity for that, for any remediation then, because that's not growth. So, I don't know if that's right, wrong, or indifferent, but that's where we settled on this. And then the building achievement goal, this is part of what we currently do, but we're hoping this incents people to have a little bit, maybe paying a little bit more attention to building goals, maybe really kind of working to come up with building goals that have more meaning. And it's not that they don't now, but just trying to beef that up a little bit more. Trying to get people, more people involved in that process, and that's, that's the piece there. The state, I believe this part, is this part required by the state, right? Yeah, and the 10% is the lowest you could have for that. You can't go below 10% for any of these, is our understanding. So, moving down here, let's see, job embedded professional development, okay. So this is basically an outline, and Dr. Hillman helped with this piece here, because he had a little bit more knowledge about how this goes on a district level. This is just outlining our current PLC process, where are the district goals set, who's on that committee? And we're adding the Q-COMP coordinator and representatives from the advisory committee to that. And that's an effort to, again, kind of give more depth to that committee so that there's just a little bit more leadership throughout the district. And then the meetings, DEPEC meetings are something that, you know, you guys are all aware about, aware of. Site building goals, who sets them? In here, we probably need to add in the name of that committee at each building, so that it's sort of officially in there. Because I know they have a little bit different name, varying from building to building. This is who is on the site building goals, and then when the time schedules are. But it's once a month, but we would probably fill this in with, you know, more specific what that is per building. And then the PLC goals, where they're developed, who's the membership on those, and so on. So again, this is the PLC process that is currently working in our school, there's really nothing new in that document. Except for us adding people to very, various levels of the leadership team.
Ray, can I just say something here?
Sure.
You know, this is one that I think, you know, we have said before that there are a number of pieces of Q-COMP, a lot of the application that our teachers as well as administrators have felt, we are already doing this. You know, and we are very far ahead of a lot of other districts who are first making an application. So, if I'm in a district that does not currently have a weekly job embedded professional learning community, this part of the application is very difficult. And I think that the folks who are gonna speak about their testimonial from other districts, we are so fortunate to have this very large part really working pretty well. And as Ray said, you know, each building on some of the committees do things just slightly different, and that's okay. But we have most of the mechanics in place for a lot of this, but I think this is one of the parts that is the clearest, that we are probably as prepared as any district going into a Q-COMP application because of the history that we have. So, I just wanted to point that out, that this one, you know, I know the committee had to wrestle with a lot of the parts of, this is not one of the parts of the application that you had to wrestle with, where I think a lot of other places would.
Yep, very well stated. So, did I hit a page or something, what happened there? Sorry. Okay.
So I think you're on...
Then we are on teacher observations and evaluations, that's gonna outline that process right here. So, the basic process that's outlined here is this, it's gonna be three times a year. We will coordinate those dates, there's requirements for when they happen, they have to happen by this point, and this point, and this point. We have plans, because this will involve some teachers that have to take some release time, but if you think about it from building to building, so we would have at the high school, if there's a seven-to-one ratio of the people who are doing the observations. That seems like a lot of people, but we think if we schedule it right, and we, let's say, have the high school takes this couple of weeks, and they stagger those, it's not like we would have every one of those teachers out of their classroom on a given day. The idea is to have, you know, teacher, building instructional leader number one on Monday, and then Tuesday would be another one, or maybe you could do them two at a time, and then stagger that throughout a two-week period, and then you have, maybe the middle school takes another one, and the coordinator would kind of work with the principals on that to look at, okay, what are the hotspots in your building for testing? And what are the things that are happening that might send a small group of teachers out to some training somewhere, or whatever that was? But the idea is to work with that, so that every, or three times a year, you would have, these building instructional leaders would come into classrooms. The teachers do get to pick the people that they work with, we did that for a number of reasons. The main one is, we want this to work, we want you to find someone that you feel safe with, that you can say, you know what, I really wanna work with, I really wanna look at this Marshall rubric that we use for TDE. And just like we do with the principals, we would pick out the items that we are concerned with, and we would say, I want you to give, to hold up a mirror to me and show me what this looks like. Am I meeting this standard, and this standard, and this standard? So you'd pick three standards. What am I doing here, what do you see? And then you would come back, and they would reflect, help, they would talk to you about that, and then you would reflect on it. And then you'd do that process again, and the next time, and the next time. This would be on top of the TDE, the principals would still do their evaluations, and they would still do their observations. This is another level, and this one is focused really, really clearly on helping teachers to identify areas they wanna grow in and to grow. And there's no better or more powerful way for people to learn than that. And that's, that's a big push everywhere you go. If I could do that individually with my 150 students, I certainly would. It's a fabulous model. And you know what, we try to the best of our ability with our students to do that kind of a thing. What did you see here, what did you do, how was your assignment? Did you get this type of problem, then you know you're ready to move on, that kind of thing. So, it would be three observations per year, and then this is the one where if they, they need to have three, or two out of the three need to be effective. There's a timeline here of the observations, basically saying, gotta finish the first one by the end of October, end of January, then the end of April. We wanted to finish by April because there might be a few people, and we don't think it'll be a large number, but there might be a few people that want that fourth opportunity, and we wanted to make sure that was all done. And we didn't want a lot of people either out of the classroom or having to deal with this as we get into May and that kind of thing. It's a pretty busy time of year. This kind of outlines, outlines the way it's gonna go, there'll be a pre-conference, or there'll be a pre-observation and a post-observation conference. The first time they meet during the year, they're required to do that face-to-face and then come up with how they wanna work. After that, they can agree that it could be, it could be during, you know, before or after school, it could be via email, just sort of depending on what they're comfortable with. So they would set those parameters at the beginning. There is some outline here of how the training would go. We do have a number of different places where we can get this training. Education Minnesota has training with the TDE model that they could offer our teachers for observations. We could also roll it in with the TDE training that the principals get, and I'm guessing that's preschool, we haven't really touched base. But those are all details that we can, you know, figure out together, we can wrestle with that out loud. We would also be working with inter-rater reliability, so getting together, maybe you would, one way it might look is you would have a volunteer that you would videotape, and then you would all watch that, and you would give your ratings, and then you would compare what you have, and then you would work on that. So, that is a big piece of it, too, trying to make sure that what I see is what you would see and what you would see. And then, as we go along here, the performance pay and evaluation. So this, this describes how that ties into those two pay pieces. The performance pay would be the 55%, the salary schedule would be moving on the salary schedule, you know, what triggers that? And those are both triggered by the effective on two of three. This piece here is allowing for, if you disagree, what you can do, there is an appeals process. And it's been a little while, I've been kind of busy in my classroom, which is where I'm supposed to be. Did I include the appeals process in this?
The appeals process is the last part, right?
It is outlined, okay, good. Oh, is this it right here?
Yeah, it's actually the next one.
So remediation is basically, if you don't agree, here's what you can do, you can choose another person to come in and look. You can request the fourth observation if you've got, if you've got, your last one was effective. And then as we get to, oh, here it is, the appeals process. It outlines who's on that committee, it'd be the district coordinator, the president or vice president of the association, and then a site leader and a building instructional leader. Now, this part here, we did two things, we, we initially had some district representative on this. But I was talking to Molly and to Matt about this, and we kind of came up with, this is a plan that has all been teacher-driven. And to bring in the district at that time creates a bit of a, a bit of a quandary, because the district essentially had nothing to do with... the district essentially had nothing to do with any of the initial ratings. So if someone didn't agree with it, then to bring the district in at that point doesn't make a lot of sense. And for that reason, we also added a piece down here at the bottom, which basically says, this is not subject to grievance, which is one sentence that is incredibly powerful because of the fact that, it means that this is dealt in-house with, essentially with the association, and there's no liability on the part of the district because of that. So that's why we added this piece, and that's why we took out the district representative up here. And our feeling is, if there is a teacher that got this far, and obviously we're hoping that doesn't happen, but if there were, the district should probably already know that anyways. We have principals that are coming into our classrooms on a repetitive basis. They're, they're doing a better job of that this year so far than I've seen since I did it. Anyways, sorry. So, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that. So, uh, they're doing a really nice job, they're in the classrooms a lot. If they don't know about this, then that's, that's, that's not tied to this. That's above my pay grade.
Well, I think, Ray, you've used the firewall concept, you know, talking about the fact that, I almost see this part as more formative, you know, kind of assessment, it's an ongoing dialogue and discussion, where the administrative evaluation process becomes a summative and a job employment review. And those two things are not mutually, you know, they can be, they do not have to be mutually exclusive. So I, I would agree that, I do think that, especially if, as we do some joint training, you know, in terms of that, I believe that for sure, the administrators probably already know the individuals who might be in need of assistance. And I actually think it could go both ways. I think...
Yep.
There's gonna be some times where administrators know what's, you know, what, what is taking place, and actually then the instructional coaches are gonna see it for the first time. So I, I do think it's important to, to honor the fact that there's one portion that is truly ongoing dialogue, peer-related feedback, and one, you know, that is truly an employment evaluation. And I, and I, I believe that that will work appropriately.
Yeah, and this is really tied, I wish I could take my snide comment back, that was horrible. But this is really tied to the fact that we want this to be a safe, growth-minded experience. We really, truly, at every point in this process, focused on the best of us, which we believe is a high percentage, really trying to look at, okay, let's say there was a teacher who was struggling, if we can provide a safe space for them to get some good, honest feedback from veteran teachers, we can provide some mentorship and that kinda thing, the reality is that this part will be less and less, less likely, even though it's probably not very likely right now at all. So that's where we're coming from on that. And this is the budget. Oh, okay.
Can I go back just quickly, Ray, to you on that?
Yeah.
You know, you have to have an appeals process, and you have to have a part for remediation, that's part of what the requirement is. You know, but if you look at research nationally, I mean, we often spend a lot of time talking about individuals in our, in classrooms across America who are identified as less than effective, but a lot of research shows that you're talking about five percent or less of people in classrooms. So the fact is, unfortunately, I think, because of the fact that this, this has to be so focused on, I think some people in the public could see it as, oh, we have, there's this rampant, you know, group of ineffective teachers, which nothing could be further from the truth. Again, national research shows that approximately five percent of people might be rated as ineffective. If you just do the math, that's only a couple of people, you know, less than five people or so in Northfield. So I just, I think it's important that we have it thought out so that when you do it, it's very clear, and the steps are very, you know, it's, it's very clear how that works. But I just don't want people to get the wrong impression that this is a rampant issue, it is not. But you have to prepare for that piece, because when you do get there, it's an emotional piece, and you don't wanna be making it up at that time. You wanna have something very clear, which I think that this actually, coincidentally, very much mirrors the performance improvement planning process that we have on the administrative side, that when Ray was president of the association, we worked very closely on, and I think both the association and the district feel that that works very well, actually, and it's, it's strikingly similar. So you could have a person getting both of those potentially at the same time, and then if a person doesn't make improvement, you know, then we have to make some decisions about, you know, how we're gonna work for the future. But I just think it's important that, in, when we talk teacher development and evaluation, we talk QCOM, there's this very unfortunate byproduct that makes people think that there's this rash of poor teaching, and nothing could be further from the truth. So, just need to make sure that we got that out there.
That's, that's well stated, and the fact is, this wasn't just made up. We did get some language from, model language from other districts. We tailored it to what we do, and I've worked deeply into due process in my previous work with the association. And this was all about providing all of the due process, and then making sure that we, we outlined it all, but, and with the idea that we know that it's not gonna be used often, but that, even if it's used once, if it's well thought out, at least we have So now, we are at the budget. Couple things I'll point out, you guys can all look at this. We did, these numbers here don't add up directly to the things next to them, or it might not be as obvious. We added in FICA and TRA right here. Here's the multiplier we used, and that's, I think I got that maybe from Val or Molly, but that's the number, one point one five is the multiplier to cover basically the benefits that would come along with these costs. So that's included in all of these numbers. The hourly piece here, the stipended hours, that's really, those are not accurate hours in, in the, the expected hours. That was really just driven to get these stipended sum total, subtotals, and to give us an idea of how many hours that might be. So for instance, the advisory committee, we think they're gonna need more than thirty-five hours. We think that the mentor's probably gonna put in, you know, four, more than forty hours. The district coordinator, I don't know if they would, I haven't done the math on that, which is funny coming out of my mouth as I say that, but the district coordinator might not put in three hundred and fifty hours above and beyond the call of duty, but they also have an additional piece of that responsibility and trying to entice someone. So those hours aren't exactly right, that's more formulaic for, for our purposes, just to kinda look at it. This forty-five thousand dollar number under the district coordinator is essentially what we think it would cost to replace that person, because we're, we're dealing with most likely a veteran teacher that would be making maybe more than that, but the person who comes in as a long-term sub for that year would be pretty close to that, is what we thought. And that would be something to be negotiated as well, between the, the district and the association, if you feel like that number needs to be different. Again, these are all including FICA over here in the per-position piece. And this, down here, you can kinda see how we arrived at these numbers. We think that the FTE is three thirty. The student count is based on the October fif, two thousand fifteen count, that's, was actually thirty-nine oh one. I rounded that down. But actually, that is up quite a bit, as I understand it, for this year right now. So that's probably closer, above four thousand, I think. The per pupil amount, this is, includes the one sixty-nine and the ninety-one. If you change this, which I could easily do on the spreadsheet, if you change that to the one sixty-nine, which is the number that, that you could do without a referendum and without, that it would just come straight from the state, if you change that, this number down here, this per teacher number goes down to, I believe it's just under a thousand dollars. It might be right at. And when you think about the extra work involved in getting that stipend, in going through the process of, of the evaluation or the observation, and the ratings, and the, the additional reflections, and the additional time, we didn't as a group think that that was really, and I've mentioned this before, we just didn't feel like that, that was enticing enough to get people to say, yeah, let's, let's do this, let's give this a try. As much as there's a lot of benefit, there's some work involved, and you want to make sure that people have an incentive to actually go through with all of this. This breakdown right here is kinda how the stipend might look in this scenario, so the individual dollar amounts and the total dollar amount down there. All right, I think that's probably way more than maybe you needed or wanted, but entertain any questions you have.
Well, Ray, I think maybe before we even take questions, if we could maybe have the invited guests here who could maybe just give, one of the things that we've really tried to do is, is to frame the why, why we think this is a good piece, but as Ray and I were talking about it, and Julie and I were talking about it, having people who have been there before, cause it's very conceptual for us, but having people who have been there before, we think would be very beneficial. So we've got three people who are just gonna take a short amount of time to share with you their personal experience. So, Gina, you look like you, or Kelly, whomever wants to go first?
This is Kelly Habsinski, she's a middle school math teacher, you might know her, she comes from Montgomery, and she was amazing on this group.
Hi, hello. I'm Kelly Habsinski, and I teach middle school math. I taught for fourteen years in Montgomery, the first, before we merged with Lee Center, we did not have QCOM at all, and then Lee Center did. So when we merged with them, we just kinda took on their plan and kinda rolled with that. And I, we, when we first started it, a lot of us were really nervous, like, what are they doing? What's this QCOM thing? And we very quickly, I think, figured out that we really enjoyed it. Like Ray said, it's, it's about growth, and so, you know, at first you're in there and you wanna do your fancy, fancy, fanciest lesson, but towards the end of it, we were bringing our worst lesson. And we were like, this, I can't, when I teach this, my kids and I are not connecting, how can I do this better? You know, what are your thoughts? What are you seeing that I might not be connecting or missing, or, you know, when we'd bring those not very polished ones in and get them polished up with help? So that was very helpful. And it's not a, it's not a gotcha, it's a safe, like you said, it's a safe place where you can bring that, be like, I'm struggling with this, please help me. So they have that safe place to go, and they can, not that our administration makes us not feel safe in any way, trust me, but, but it's just that safe place with your colleagues. It's also, for me, it was a really great place for me to get leadership, gain that knowledge and that level, cause I was a coach, which for us would be a building instructional leader. But I was a coach over there with my math department for a long, long time. And just, it's nice to be acknowledged as a leader and to have, to be able to take that on and to have that different role, I guess, outside of your classroom sometimes. So that's nice, and there's so many ways for it to happen. You can be a site leader, you can be a, a building instructional leader, whatever you wanna do, wherever you feel comfortable doing it. We did not have a mentor program built in, but I think that's a fantastic idea. Being a new teacher to the district, it would've been nice to have a mentor. And, yeah, I mean, I just think, I think it would be sad if we didn't develop this plan, because it is so growth-minded and growth mindset. You just get so much out of it, and it brings you together, and you have that person you can go to, that person you can talk to. And it also has ownership, I think, of the staff. We get to have a little more say in the goals, we get to have a little more say in, you know, we do the student engagement survey right now, but where's the, there's not a lot of oomph behind it, I guess? This kinda puts it, you have to really, really think about it, and really, really write it down, and, which we do, but now you're, it's tied into this QCOM thing that's tied to money and tied to your growth and all that other stuff. So I just think it really adds a lot of ownership for the teachers too. Good?
This is Gina Swenson, you're from Sibley, right?
Yeah.
And she came from St. Louis Park, so we had a very similar district to ours, and then Montgomery, of course, is probably a bit smaller, so she gave us a really great perspective, and again, fabulous number of work.
So, good evening, yeah, like Ray said, I'm Gina Swenson, I teach first grade over at Sibley. I taught for sixteen years in St. Louis Park, and St. Louis Park went on board with QCOM in two thousand and six. And I was privileged enough to be a part of the training program. At that time, they had Charlotte Danielson, which Northfield has moved away from, but Charlotte Danielson team came in, and we had a large training session, it was spread out very well throughout the year to maintain support and guidance as we took this new role on. It was, it was a wealth to our staff, and PLCs was just emerging, so we were new to that. It's a benefit for Northfield to be taking this on when it's already been kind of learned in other districts, and what works and what doesn't. The plan that we had in two thousand and six compared to when I left St. Louis Park in two thousand and thirteen is vastly different, and better, and stronger, and brought teachers together, and I don't know if you heard Dr. Hillman's address at the beginning of the school year, was about making connections. And really, that's what QCOM does. It builds a connection for staff, it builds a connection for teacher leaders, people that want to take those extra initiatives to be a part of making everybody a stronger person and teacher, and building up the, the students that we are working with on a day-to-day basis. So, yeah, I just really can't say enough, we're already doing the pieces, I think, when Ray initially sent out an email who has some input on this, I said, Northfield's already doing all these pieces. We can do this, it just takes that little extra step to be able to put these people in these roles that make it a little bit stronger, so. Yeah, I think that it is a well-thought-out plan. The inter-rater reliability makes us stronger as a team of teacher leaders. I participated in St. Louis Park, we also were able to kind of, I, I had small children, I was pregnant during one ti, one year, so I was able to kind of tailor to what worked best for me. I was a observer at one point, when they needed extra people to kind of fill in, which isn't a role that we have in this plan, but was beneficial to me. I was a mentor, I was a building instructional leader, so it really was a great opportunity to work with the staff and, and become a stronger leader. And also, just when you're working through those observation pieces, there is that level of, oh, you know, somebody's coming in, but it really is about making sure people do know, you're not there to judge them, you're there to work with them, and you're inviting somebody into your world. And I think that in itself is a great thing, because I learned about different teachers, and I was able to know, oh, well, they do that. So if I had something that was a resource that supported their goal and supported their student learning, I was able to offer that resource, and it, it just opened that other connection and conversation to continue beyond that, beyond that observation, so. Thank you.
You do introduce me?
You know what, I'd love to introduce you. Can I say something? So, when I walked out of here the first night that I met with you, the first thing Kim did was came up and said, she come around outside the door and said, this, this is, I was surprised that we didn't have this in Northfield, and anything I can do to help, just let me know. And my comment was basically informing people at the district level because of her role is a big piece of this. So I know that Kim was a big supporter of this, and I'm really happy that you were able to share today.
That is true. So, as you know, I did teach in Farmington before coming to Northfield, and I was a Spanish teacher at the high school. We started QCOM in Farmington in two thousand and five, so one of the very early districts on board with QCOM, and I think everybody had a lot of questions about it at that time. And what we saw is that it was really great, it did, you know, we didn't have the PLC process firmly in place at that time, so we were working on that, and so it, it solidified that, it solidified the peer coaching that went on between teachers and the mentoring that went on, even when that was informal, after formal relationships had maybe been established through QCOM. It solidified the amount of collaboration that happened between our leadership teams in our schools, and the amount of alignment that happened between our buildings and our district. And all of those things were really beneficial to the kids, and so, and I would also say really beneficial to our teacher growth, which in turn led to that benefit for the kids. So we've heard a lot of people say, we already do these things in Northfield, and I think that that is true. I also think what QCOM does is takes and makes a process for moving the pieces that you're doing for, or that you have available to your teachers, and making them part, making those best practices part of the commonplace practice for all of the teachers. And so you take peer coaching, which is available right now, and you make it part of what all of our teachers are doing, just as part of their day-to-day, then they're all benefiting from it, as opposed to having the access to it. It provides the funding to train more teachers as coaches, and so teachers gain a better understanding of that cognitive coaching ability, which also helps their instructional practice, I would say. And for me, as a co- And for me, as a coach, the biggest benefit probably came from seeing what was going on in other people's classrooms and going, wow, that was really great, and wanting to be able to try some of those things in my own classroom, and to share some of those things with other colleagues. And so, even beyond the coaching sessions, that, that process in our district established a lot more, just kind of grassroots sharing, things that came about at staff meetings, even to say, hey, we've been seeing really awesome stuff, and we need to get this beyond the eyes of those coaches to all, more of our teaching staff. So, that was, that was a really big benefit. It makes that job-embedded professional growth for everybody. I already mentioned, it takes that availability and puts it into commonplace practice. And then also, I think for me, we heard, we heard some, some conversations about the leadership opportunities. As a teacher, I was hungry for those kinds of opportunities to be a leader in my district, and that gave me that experience, it helped me in moving into the role that I'm in now, and I'm grateful for those opportunities. So, I do, I do support it, I think it takes some of those really, like I say, best practices, and makes them what really benefit all students, and it gives that, that bit of incentive to really do the work behind it, and, and make it much more widespread in all of the far-reaching areas of our district, so, that's been my experience. Thank you.
So, will entertain any questions that you have. I've asked Kelly and Gina to help out if they want to jump in, so we'll see how that goes. If you want to refer to whatever spot it is, I could flip that up here as well, if that's helpful, but anything.
Okay, so, open it up with board members' questions, and just a reminder, when you're asking questions, if you can be sure that the microphone is as close to you as it can be without echoing, that would be really great. Okay, so, board member question. Ellen?
So, I have a comment first and then a question. So, what I thought was really interesting, listening to Kelly, Gina, and Kim talk, were the things that I had thought were the benefits really came through in what you said. So, what I like about this is that it gives this path for teachers, and if you have more of a career professional path, you're more likely to maybe stay with the district. You talked about the observations, what I was going to point out is the 42 that are observing, the amount that they're going to gain, I mean, you're going to gain being observed, I'm sure, but those 42, wow, that, that's a great place to be. The relationship building, I mean, that, we've been talking about that in strategic planning, I mean, this is just one more golden way that that could happen. And then the last piece is that, you know, teacher growth is going to lead to student growth, and that's what we want to hear about at the board level. So, I really, really like those pieces. So, my question is, when I was reading through this, I see you building off of the PLCs, but what I wasn't sure about is how you thought, the association's thought about the, at the elementary level, we've got the RTI coaches, and then, you know, Mary Grace has been so involved in the professional development pieces, too. How some of the other pieces that we have in the district might fill in or fit in with this plan?
Yeah, that's, that's interesting, because we, we did have a considerable amount of conversation about that. And part of it is, if you look in the job descriptions, in some of those, it's basically to, to work with Mary Grace's department essentially on, if there's any professional development related to these types of things. So, we don't have specific things outside of that, but that's, that's definitely something that, that is worth considering, how that would go together.
Board members, other questions? Margaret?
I have several questions.
But I'm just going to ask one, I'm going to ask one.
I have several questions, but I'm just going to ask one, so that we can take turns here. So, help me understand, with the, with the Q Comp coordinator, the district coordinator, is that a staff member who then takes a leave of absence from their current position to serve a two-year term, and you're asking that the memorandum of understanding say that they can go back? Isn't that usually the basic terms of a leave of absence?
It's, Mr. Hillman could probably speak more to this, but that's not the gen, that's not how it usually works.
Okay.
I believe it's if you go a year later, you can get your position, and then after that, it's whatever you're licensed for. So, we, we want it just for the very first term of someone who does the coordinator position. So, they would basically be a TOSA or a teacher on special assignment, is how we probably word that as it goes together. And I'll, I'll turn it over to Matt.
I'm making sure Molly was shaking her head to make sure I'm on, but the way our contract language reads is that if you come back after one year, you're essentially guaranteed the same position for which you left. So, if I was Gina Swenson, and I'm a first-grade teacher, and I take a one-year leave of absence, I'm guaranteed to come back to that, that my first-grade assignment.
Okay.
If I have taken a leave of absence of more than one year, then when I return, the district is simply obligated to make sure that you have a teaching position within your licensure area. So, that could be, right now, Gina's at Sibley, if she were to take a multiple-year leave of absence, when she came back, the district would have the contractual right to assign her to Bridgewater in third grade, and I'm not saying that's what I do, I'm just using it as an example.
Thank you.
But in this case, what it would do, because that is a real serious concern for a lot of teachers, and so, what the association has asked, answers in consideration, if someone says, yes, I will do that two-year term as the Q Comp coordinator, that they would have the ability to go back to their same assignment, which would not be currently permitted under the regular contract that we have.
So, as though they were taking a one-year leave of absence?
Essentially, that's what the association is asking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, board members, other questions? Rob?
I just had a question that, about the appeals process, so if you want to go to that page, there's just a part that says, the association has the right to appeal both the reasonableness and the evaluation of the site goals, could you explain what that means? Because that seems like you're appealing, it's not the teacher appealing, it's the association appealing.
Right, right. Basically, that one was put in there to make sure that the goals that we set at the district level, I mean, they're, they're generally going to work. And it's basically to make sure that we have the ability to look at the building goals and, and go in and say, you know, you've got three goals here, and none of these seem like these are things that we can reach. We don't think it'll come to that, that piece, but it was really more of a protection of, our teachers can't set PLC goals that they can reach if the building goal is unreachable, you know, maybe, and, and I don't think that's a normal, like, going-to-happen kind of thing, but it's one of those where you have to sort of protect everyone that's involved. So, that was the reason that one was in there. Thanks.
I also think that this is a good area to point out, that it has not happened often, but I'm aware of a couple of Q Comp situations where there was a building goal that was based on, for example, the MCA score. And in a couple of cases during the development of the MCA process, the state came out with a revision to their calculation of the building's success. And I know at least in a couple of districts' cases where a particular building did not meet a goal, and then when the correction was made, they did meet the goal, and so therefore, the people on that Q Comp plan were then eligible for the dollars. So, I think the, the discussion there is, if we choose to use external goals that are evaluated essentially externally, is there a way to make sure that there's some integrity in that process, should there be some kind of flaw? And I think that that's an area we'll have certainly more discussion, but I think one of the hopes would be that, as you see, if you've ever been to a DPAC meeting, you know that there's quite a few teachers on, on the DPAC committee already, but what the ATPPS plan puts forward, the Q Comp plan puts forward, is that there would be specific representatives from the Q Comp steering committee there to help mitigate that, so that it, you don't, we never want to get to a point where we have to go back and look at the validity of a goal. Hopefully, by front-loading the people on those committees who are making the goal, there can be some tasks and understand, okay, we, we had an opportunity for input, so therefore I should limit it on the, on the reverse side. But if there is a circumstance where we're using some kind of external group, and there's some calculation that is determined to have been incorrect, which I know is shocking, that that would never happen from the department, but it has happened, and we just want to make sure that we protect folks for that purpose.
And I'll just point out, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness, I, this part right here, this appeals thing, this is really important, even though we are all hoping we never have to go here, it's so important to get this document or this part of the document right. We can revise it after a year if it doesn't work, and I get that, but I want this right, so I appreciate that question. And, and that state, that piece of this also goes back to the end, if we're, if we're getting to a point where, if it goes through the committee and someone appeals something, let's say you didn't get your money for your building goal, well, if we didn't have that in there, then it'd be hard to put the not subject to grievance piece, because we didn't have any way to deal with that building goal ahead of time. So, it's kind of just trying to build the best policy we can.
Other questions? Noel?
I got a bunch, and that shouldn't indicate my approval or disapproval.
Noel, can you pull your microphone?
Yep. I have a bunch, a bunch of questions, and, and that shouldn't be a measure of my approval or disapproval, it's just that I, I think it's a very, very complex program with a bunch of moving parts.
Yep.
And it, it seems to me, from what I've read and what I've heard, that we're installing another leadership organization. And then, and I'm, I'm just going to throw out the questions, they may not be in the right order, but they're, they're probably timing somewhere in this discussion. How is the program ultimately evaluated, and when and how?
That's a pretty, that's a good one. It's evaluated yearly based on the state's criteria and how it fits with the legislation. And the district coordinator would have to lead that evaluation, and they would have to file that paperwork and show the state that we meet X, Y, and Z. And that would go with, the state has to approve this plan first. So, it's really evaluated based on what are the legislative requirements, and then it's evaluated internally, and that's reported back to the state through the same paperwork that we would probably have to file on a district level for other programs, is my guess. Yep.
Well, then, am I correct in assuming that we, the program installs, not sure the right choice of words is there, but is, is installing a mentorship organization, which is, to some respects, a leadership organization?
I see exactly what you're asking, and I think, I think the short answer is yes, but it's not a leadership in the fact that they would take control, but it's more of a density of leadership. It's more sharing the, the responsibility for our growth amongst our, our colleagues.
If I were to say it again, I might say evaluation program.
There is an evaluation, there is an observation component, an evaluation component that is required by the legislation. It's not related to disciplinary evaluation, so the monetary piece would definitely be tied to that, but it would be separate from the evaluation that the principals would do.
May I add to that?
Yes, please.
So, the other name besides Q Comp is?
Lower the mic a little bit.
The other name besides Q Comp is ATTPS, so, alternative, ATPPS, yeah, the Alternative Teacher Performance Pay Systems are, are.
Professional?
Yeah. So, really, what this program that the state is providing is, how do we provide, or how do we add into teacher growth? And we're paying people for fulfilling their goals and working together to maintain their goals. So, it really is a state program that is uplifting their teachers and making it better. So, an alternative teacher performance pay system. So, that's why it goes by two names, if that helps at all.
Couldn't find a more confusing acronym was the problem. I, I think the other piece with that, Noel, that I would say from having, looking at the plan, is that I really think that, that what you speak of as an evaluation system, I think is a, really a support evaluation system. It is a non-binding, you know, it's binding in terms of the, the goals, but the worst-case scenario, if I don't meet my goals, is I don't get the performance pay. Where, on the administrative side, if I am judged by the administrative evaluation process as being deficient, there is an entire additional piece around a, a performance improvement plan and potential termination of my employment. So, the greatest factor in, in the teacher-led portion of this is a performance pay component. The biggest upside is, frankly, there's way more people who can give feedback than I can have our administrators do. If you look at the ratio of one to seven, my principals, our principals would love to have one to seven, or one, they love to have one to 40, if you do the math, our principals are responsible for a significant number of people. In this case, you have much smaller groups who are able to give more direct feedback, and it's in a non-binding, not necessarily a value to piece, there's some money tied to it, but my job isn't on the line. I think that's the biggest difference. And there is, we, we have a legislative created problem here, in the fact that we have two setups in Minnesota. We have the districts who are in Q Comp, who can receive $169 per pupil and a local levy opportunity of $91. I think C would say that that's unfair, that there's a group of people who have access to those dollars, and everyone else has to do by law the teacher development and evaluation. And when we have seen, we've seen multiple presentations from Ed Minnesota and from the department, they've got a really wonderful Venn diagram, I wish we would have included, where it talks about what are the parts of Q Comp, what are the parts of the teacher development and evaluation law, what are parts that are exclusive to each of those, and then what are uncommon. And so, they really do play off each other very well, and I think they also really give us a chance to accelerate what our goals of teacher development and evaluation have been, and frankly, that we're limited by the limited number of administrative, we're very lean administratively. This would provide us some much-needed ability to accelerate that process, which is why there's, there's some excitement about it. So, I, I agree, it seems that way, but on one hand, the worst that can happen to me is I can't get my stipends. On the administrative side, if I'm deficient a couple of years, I could lose my job.
Can I ask more questions?
Let's.
Well, we'll rotate.
Okay, yeah, was there any other board members who haven't asked a question that, that wish to? Jeff?
I haven't really, I haven't really asked anything, but I know, you know, Q Comp a while back was kind of used as a political football, and really, it's, the idea behind it is, it's really kind of incentive pay for people that are doing a good job, so, I mean, that's, that's the long and the short of it, is I see it.
Margaret, I think you indicated you had another question, so go ahead.
I do. And again, it's not my approval or disapproval, like Noel said, I'm just, I have a lot of questions.
You should, that's why we elected you all.
Thank you. Under the percent of performance pay per category, so based on the budget, a teacher can earn X that year for performance pay, and there's four components. Do they have to hit them all, like, is it an all or nothing?
No.
No. So, they could hit A, 55%, but not hit B, C, or D, and still get 55% of that potential piece?
Yep.
Okay. And is this voluntary, or are all teachers expected to take part in Q Comp?
This would be all of us.
You're expected to?
We would all take part of this.
You'd all take part, okay. And the big question, I guess, for you two is, is it, do you feel safe, is it a place where you, it's safe and trustworthy, like, your observer's not going to go to the teacher's lounge, and you wouldn't believe what I just saw in my observation today? It feels really safe and respectful?
Mary, just close.
Okay.
I honestly don't think that ever, I can't think of a time it ever happened.
And that would be part of the training.
Yeah, part of the tra, I assumed that was part of the training.
The only time I ever heard about another, another one was, it kind of was an appeals situation.
Kelly, would you mind coming to the podium?
Sorry, thank you.
Then we can pick it up on.
You mean, you can't see me behind this giant thing? The only time it ever happened in Montgomery was, we had kind of an appeals process going on, so the site, the site leader and the coaches kind of came together and were like, what do we do, how do we handle this, da-da-da-da, but it was still inside of the program and inside of our safe space.
So, it was an appropriate discussion?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Margaret, you on your question about would all teachers participate? Remember, one of the key things at the end of the day, not only does the school board have to vote to go to Q Comp, but the association also has to vote, and I think it's more than a plurality, or more than a majority, isn't it, Ray? Is it higher?
It's the same as our contract vote, and I believe that's actually 50 plus one, but I haven't looked at that part, but it's bound by our contractual vote, whatever we approve the agreements with.
So, the point is that it would cover all teachers, because the exclusive representative is voting to go to it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Can I add to that, too?
Please.
The Q Comp program, we're not sure the exact number, but they actually require us to have like an 80%, I think, approval for the union, so it's actually.
No, I looked it up with Erin, then Molly.
Did you?
Yeah, I went to Erin.
Okay, well, then. Well, that's changed, sorry.
Yeah, Noel, you're right. Yep.
And I, yes, go ahead. One more, this is just completely literal. I know we struggle for subs on a daily basis. Do we have enough sub coverage, coverage to take this on? We do? Okay.
Oh, no, I was, that was a good question.
Okay.
You know, that, that's a fair question and that's something that we've actually talked about as part of this. The, the substitute shortage is becoming more and more real all the time and not just with our teacher group, with all groups. So, what I think Ray had indicated before was that there'd be some intentionality of when we pick, how we would do those kinds of days. And frankly, we even discussed that if you're in a crisis situation like a flu hit and we have a whole bunch of people who called in sick, this kind of thing is a, a piece that could be flexible. And if we had to cancel something for the day, you know, to make sure that all classes could be covered, you know, we could certainly do that. There are also some other strategies that we have, just brainstormed a little bit about ways that we could be more creative in that. Not quite very fully baked yet, so I don't know if we're, we're to talk about those. But the, the substitute shortage is real and it's not just impacting us. So, the key thing here would be, number one, we need to be intentional. Number two, we'd have to have a way that should there be some kind of percentage of teachers out for the day, that we would cancel this and allow those substitutes to fill in for other folks. So, certainly something in the front of our minds because that's a really important piece to make sure that we've got qualified adults with all kids during the day.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I really appreciate all the great questions. Noel, you have a question?
I have a couple more. Simple question, but it, it's?
Noel, can you pull the microphone?
Simple question, but not to me. Who supervises the mentors? And how do we know they're all on the same page?
Well, the mentors would all go through training. And they would be hired by the, the, the oversight group, essentially, the district group. And there will be some administrators on that group and it would be an application process. So, they'd apply, they would be trained. And quite frankly, if someone's been a mentor before, that sounds like a pretty good mentor. Doesn't mean that would be exclusive to people who've done it before.
Is their work evaluated?
Everybody is evaluated. So, the mentors would be evaluated by the program coordinator and by the people that they work with as mentees, who would be based on a rubric that we would provide or that we would develop.
Yes, go ahead.
It seems that we've got people here that could tell us what the downside is on this program. There's gotta be a downside as well as an upside. So, what's the downside?
Well, yeah, you know, actually, that's, that's really a good question. And it brings me to what I was going to, to close with, actually. Would, do you have any other questions? And then I can cover that is, when I get to that?
The day isn't over yet. I probably do, but I'm not gonna ask anymore.
Sure, okay.
I actually, if all other board members have?
But I will address that Noel.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like a great idea to conclude. So, have all board members had an opportunity to ask questions? Okay. So, I had a couple of questions. Within the breakdown of the percentage of performance pay, the stipend breakdown?
Yep.
I know that you had talked about modeling after some other districts. Is this a, a direct model of another district or did you sort of make this a Northfield piece?
Probably, is it St. Louis Parks?
Okay.
It's kind of amalgamation, right?
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious if, if that was?
It's really close to St. Louis Parks, I think. And then we, we moved a few numbers around because their plan had changed since the copy that, that we had and we, we fixed ours differently.
Okay. Then my other question is, would a building instructional leader ever be able to participate in their own PLC? Would they have time or would they often be?
They have to.
Okay.
Yep. Everybody has to be in their PLCs.
Okay, so they would?
They would deal with their PLC, they would have to make a time. We'd have to figure that, that piece would have to be figured out how they do that. But they wouldn't use PLC time for this. They would, they might go, they might meet with PLC groups. So, if you're working with seven people, that could potentially be one or two PLCs. So, they might need to work with them maybe at the very beginning of the year as building goal, or as PLC goals are being developed, or they could do that outside. But it's not meant to take them from their PLC work at all. Yeah.
And then I think my last question?
Does it speak well there?
Yeah, that's totally.
Yep.
If they're not one of, they're not one of the others, you're definitely in PLC.
Okay, okay, good. I think my last question is, do you anticipate at some point in the process that you would evaluate stipends for possible, you know, just increases or review? And then how would that process take place?
The entire program is, needs to be evaluated yearly. And you can make changes on a yearly basis, but basically it's more of a two-year plan. So, the, the director initially would probably, that'd be part of their first year work is to figure out how those go together. And definitely those are up for movement. There could be whole positions eliminated or added or ratios changed. All of it is, is able to be refined as we do the program evaluations on a yearly basis.
Okay. And then my last question is sort of a, a business question. So, when you're calculating the stipends, et cetera, is that something that the district's business, finance area would take care of? Or is that all directed through the QCOM coordinator?
What happens is basically the structure within here would, would deal with that. So, like the building instructional leaders would work with their individual people and they would sign off on those things. And then at the end of the year, all of it's then filed with the business office. So, the business office one time a year would deal with basically a piece of paper as they, they've shared, which has all the stipends outlined and there'd be an initial. And then the, the site leader would sign off on that, hand that all in, and then one check every year. That, that last check of the year basically would, would cover that.
Okay. Right, and I just wanted to add my comments and thank Kelly and Gina and Kim for, for your perspective. I think that was a, a really essential element to this tonight. And so, your closing remarks, I think, we'll be ready for and then maybe just highlight next steps so we're all aware of what we'll pursue with this.
This is perfect that you asked that question. I'll give you that five dollars for segueing me into this. I really appreciate your efforts.
Five?
But here's the deal.
I heard fifty.
Times are tough. It's kind of funny because I've been here, I don't know, three times or four times, whatever, more hours than you care to listen to me and more hours than I really care to, to speak and so on. And I've had building meetings, I've worked with the committee and we've all worked on this. So, it's, it probably seems weird, but I really am not trying to sell this. I don't, I, I don't think this is the best program in the world. QCOM is not the best program in the world, it's not. But it's an opportunity for us to take a lot of the things we're doing and bolster them and to make them better. And with that comes warts, there are growing pains we can't even see. Every plan changes every single year. And what we have is really well thought out. We have a lot of bases for everything we put together, but I know for a fact it's not perfect. As far as what's not perfect about it or what's not good about it, I can't necessarily tell you that. What I can tell you is, given the legislation and the funding we have to deal with and given all of the resources we have, we've come up with something that we believe is a pretty darn good addition to what we do here at Northfield Schools. And it's a, it's a way to capture some dollars that aren't already here. I know that we're also asking for a, an additional district piece, but I also believe that that is, is a smaller amount, given the impact that this can have. And I really liked Ellen's piece because when you commented about teacher growth does translate to student growth. And we are all here about student growth. And I haven't necessarily put in student, put student growth out here, mostly because I think that that statement is so obvious. That if we can get our teachers to have, to be reflective practitioners at a higher degree, that that has to pay dividends for the, for the students. Is this the very best thing in the world? No. Is this perfect? No. If you decide in six months that we aren't going through with it, I, we can all live with that. But given where we're at in Minnesota with the legislation, given what's written there in law, I think we've come up with something that can capture at least the best of, of what's there. And, and we get a chance to redo it. We get a chance to look at it after a year, after, every year we evaluate it. We look at what's working, what's not, we change them. As Gina pointed out, the St. Louis Park plan that she started with is not even close to what, when she ended and it just?
It got better and better.
It just got better.
And TC used it too.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's our deal. Again, growth. It's, it's really about trying to, trying to capture what's available and, and allow growth at the, the level of teachers in both leadership and, and what they do in the classroom. And, and then that's gonna translate to student growth. I will tell you in closing that the opportunity that I, I really appreciated my opportunity a year and a half ago to work at the middle school with, with Greg Gellino because I was in, I think, I counted, it was between two and three hundred classrooms throughout the year. And when I came back last year, I've never had the kind of connections that I had last year with my students in all the twenty-three, four, five, six, seven, eight, I can't remember how many years before that. Because of all the great teachers that I saw as I got into, into the building and out and about the building. And I have to believe that, and I know that you two touched on it a little bit and so did you, I have to believe that that's kind of an unthought of and unintended consequence of this, is that the density of leadership, when you get teachers communicating and sharing and working with, with each other. That was my phone. I don't know what it said. So, are there problems? Absolutely no. But I think what we've got is probably the best of what we can do to start something up. And we can have a little time to kind of go back and forth and figure it out too. All right? Thank you very much, everybody, for your time.
Thank you. Oh, Ness, Noel?
I wanted to thank Ray for his summary. And it sounds like we don't know everything that could happen, but most of what's gonna happen is gonna be a plus.
Well, that's our hope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Becky Hillman?
Yeah, and I just wanna, I wanna thank Ray, I wanna thank Gina, I wanna thank Kelly and Kim for sharing those pieces very powerful tonight. So, the next steps here would be, first step would be in the items for individual action this evening. We're asking you to consider basically allowing the district to sign the letter of intent. That simply is a procedural piece that allows us to move into an official capacity as, as an applicant. Then what we would do is we would come back on October tenth at the next board meeting. We would allow for some additional questions. If there are things that you would like us to bring the next time, you know, clarification wise, if, you know, through Julie, if you can get me those, we can certainly bring additional information or pieces that you ponder over the next week or so. You know, at that point, then we just have to make some decisions. Are we comfortable enough at that point to make the initial application? Now, there are many steps along the way where either side can say, thanks, but no thanks. And it really isn't until after the commissioner would assign the final, final, final one, where then both sides of the organization, the association and the district, you know, would finalize their position. So, if you're comfortable enough at the next meeting, we could certainly take action to approve submitting the initial application, which at that point would get us in before the October fifteenth deadline. And as Ray said, statutorily, the department then has thirty days to get back to us in terms of their pieces around, their concerns about the application and those kinds of things. Now, at the end of the day, if you work, I always like to work backwards. And working backwards is, a lot of people could do a lot of work and if the 2017 legislature does not provide additional funding, it's a no-go. We are, we, we just have agreed, we cannot do this without the hundred and sixty-nine dollars, you know, piece either and you wouldn't even levy it if you didn't have the other part. So, the fact is if we had to wait, if, if we have additional questions, we're concerned about waiting, we can certainly bring it back at the twenty-fourth and in, in November. We could certainly bring it back those times. And once we're comfortable, we could then submit the initial application. As Ray said, then by statute, the department wouldn't have to get back to us, to us until February fifteenth or so because it's thirty days after each of the rolling deadlines. Now, the piece around that is that we'd be then working in the spring, which does have a number of challenges of its own. And as we've said, some potential budget adjustments and things that we might be going through. So, there could be an advantage to going in the fall in terms of being able to get that ongoing dialogue with the department. But at the end of the day, we are still beholden to on May or June or whenever the legislature gets finished, especially in a funding year. So, I, I appreciate Ray's comments about saying that if we have questions or we wanna make sure that we're measuring three times and cutting once, which I, I always agree with. The October fifteenth deadline provides us some opportunity to do some additional work this fall with the department. But at the end of the day, it's not the end of the world if we don't submit it by then. It just will push some of the work back. Now, the truth is if the department doesn't get a ton of applications by October fifteenth, there's a reasonable chance they might just out of the goodness of their heart, provide us some feedback in terms of that. And my understanding is the department's really interested in working with school districts to make sure that the QCOM plans are appropriate, that they're, they're well thought out and they have a chance to be successful. Because they don't gain by a district not being successful. And QCOM plans right now represent more than half the students in the state. It's not half the districts. But if you look at the total number of students in the state, more than half of the students in the state have teachers who are governed under QCOM. So, the department, I think, has really made an effort to make sure that schools have a chance to be successful. In my conversations with Tyler Livingston, who is now kind of the QCOM person, we have a previous relationship with Tyler because we worked with him on the principal evaluation pilot that we did and we're selected for a promising practice award from Tyler's group. So, we already have a relationship with Tyler and so it's very comfortable to be discussing with him. So, that's really our next steps. It's later in this meeting, are you comfortable with the letter of intent? Which again, really doesn't hold us to anything. Even the first application piece, which we could approve as early as the next meeting, there are still many opportunities for us to get out. Does that sound about right, Ray?
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and for the great detail and all the opportunity to ask questions. We really appreciate it and we will see you on October tenth.
All right, I'll put it on my calendar.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. So, we will move then to our next item for discussion, which is the curriculum review process. And here, Mary Grace Hillman, Director of Teaching.
Mary Grace Hanson.
Mary Grace Hanson. Sorry, Mary Grace Hillman.
Well, whatever works.
Yeah, but there's a Grace Hillman.
There's a Grace Hillman and there's a Mary Hillman, but this is a Mary Grace Hanson.
Mary Grace Hanson, sorry.
Mary Hillman is graceful.
Director of Teaching and Learning for the District.
Matthew, help me get out of this.
And you, everyone obviously knows there was a, a present, copy of the presentation in your.
That was in full screen mode here. That looks like what you want, right?
That, that looks good. Okay.
Thank you for inviting me to speak this evening. And it's a curriculum review report, but before we do that, we'll use this. Because our fall workshop had a unique setup this year, I thought you might be interested to know a little bit about what happened and some of the results of that. And I included the schedule that we have, that we used this fall for our fall workshop. And the picture is the elementary teachers from Greenville Park who presented on interactive writing strategies. So, on Monday, we had a teacher workday with no meetings. Tuesday was a building day in the training time. Wednesday was ready, set, go day for the elementary and professional learning for the pre-K and secondary. And then Thursday was a professional learning day for everyone. One of the comments we got was, we had a lot more choices on Thursday. Why did that happen? Well, it happened because we added a hundred and fifty more people to the mix than we had on Wednesday. So, we had to have a few more choices. So, to include the data from the fall workshop session, we had a hundred and thirty-one sessions and that was a duplicate count because some of them were offered more than once. Sixty-six were unique sessions. We had fifty-four presenters and fifty of those were teachers on staff who were sharing their best practices and ideas. And we also included the Northfield, had presentations from Northfield Hospital, the Human Rights Commission, as Mr. Hardy told you about earlier, and the Strategic Planning Commission, uh, Planning Process with Dr. Bruce Miles. And that's that picture there. We did a survey and we're just compiling the results, but one of the questions asked was, I liked the new format. And those that strongly agreed or agreed were ninety-one point four percent of secondary teachers and seventy-two, or seventy point three percent of the elementary teachers. And if you included the neutral response, it was ninety-seven percent and ninety-two percent. And part of that with the elementary is they just had just come off of ready, set, go day. So, they were a little? And part of that with the elementary is they just had just come off of ready, set, go day. So, they were a little um, a little tired out after that. So, now moving into the curriculum portion. We start with this quote from Mike Schmoker, who wrote the book Focus: Elevating the Essentials to Radically Improve Student Learning, which is of course what we're all about. And he essentially says that the three things we need to focus on are what we teach, how we teach it, and authentic literacy. And that's the, what we teach is of course, our curriculum. The Minnesota Department of Ed, and you don't have to read this, I did include it in your packet, um, by legislation, reviews the.
The backward arrow. One more time.
There we go. Um, reviews the standards. And they put in this process and sent it out to us in the middle end of August of this year. So, this is how they review the standards for each subject area. And then they are subject to legislative approval. And we'll get into this a little bit more as we move on here. Um, all of our curriculum is standards-based. And the standards are available at MDE and again, reviewed by the process, by their tenure process. And they use the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments to measure the success of the implementation of those standards in the areas of reading, math, and science. The other curriculum areas are not assessed at the state level. If the Minnesota Department of Ed does not provide standards, the departments are to use their national or their association standards. And we run into that, um, especially in world languages. The department does not have specific standards, but we use the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages. And all of our documents can be found on the website. We just updated last summer, well, in July or August, to the new format for our website. So, we're still in the process of updating some of those documents. The curriculum review cycle, which I also included um, in your documents, is a six-year process. And years one and two are research and evaluation. And we spend a lot of time looking at data as to how, what has been happening. We look at best practices. We review the standards to make sure they are being implemented. And at the end of year two, we typically order new materials if we find that we have gaps in our materials that we're using for teaching. And then three, years three and four, we implement due training and evaluate the process. And years five and six are full implementation. Um, and this has worked very well for about the last twenty years. But we're finding that um, this is not always a good process. And we'll get into that in a little bit. As part of the review cycle in years one and two, we send teachers out to attend conferences. And um, FIED last year was able to attend the National Conference, which was held in Minneapolis, and came back with a good idea for using a type of Fitbit with their classes. And Dr. Hillman has worked with the hospital and some grants to be able to provide those for our FIED department. And that's something they learned at their conference. Um, this year, the National Science Convention is in Minneapolis. Science is not under review, but we have to be flexible because this is just too good an opportunity to pass up. And so, we will be sending um, the entire high school science department, representatives from the middle school science department, and one um, representative from each of the elementary buildings in fourth or fifth grade, because science MCA is given in fifth grade, to the National Science Convention. Again, it goes back to the curriculum review process. While it's rigidly in place, we need to update it and be a little bit more flexible. CTE is also under review right now. They're starting their second year. And last year, one of the things they wanted to do was visit Alexandria because they had just built the new high school with a lot of emphasis in the CTE area. So, we spent a day, and you can see them, they had a very good day. And it was very interesting for them to be able to review what's happening in Alexandria. And they came back with some good insights. So, we have some challenges and some good news. Um, some of the challenges with our review process is our advanced placement courses. And if your, your, if your subject area isn't under the review cycle, but the Advanced Placement Board says, "You're adopting a new textbook, you're changing this," obviously, we do it. So, that's sometimes outside of our curriculum review cycle. The MDE cycle has also changed in the past few years. It would be nonsensical for us to go through a whole review process. And then the next year, the Minnesota Legislature adopts new standards and we have to start all over. Um, publishing companies, that has been a real exercise in frustration some days, because they also up, do updates and have expiration dates on their eBooks that don't coincide exactly with our review cycle. And it's extremely important that we get the updated materials to our students. And so, that's been a challenge. We also have larger class sizes going through. So, all of a sudden, we need twenty to thirty more books or materials in a classroom, or we add a section of fifth grade, which is wonderful. But again, it causes a little ripple effect. And then again, we have budget concerns, which this review cycle works very well in its rigid form. But when we need to have the flexibility, we have to have the flexibility in the budget too. So, good news, um, we have very dedicated teachers that are very willing to work and study and examine all of these things. We have our professional learning communities in place. We have the continuous improvement with the site improvement plans. We use our data to inform our decisions. And technology has been a real boon for us. Now, as I have indicated all along, we are looking at, for lack of a better term, blowing up the review cycle and doing something completely different with this to meet some of these challenges in a better way. And Dr. Hillman and I have been talking, and I talked with Bruce Miles, and we're looking at using the chainsaw planning um, procedure that we have used for their strategic planning to put into place a new review cycle that would meet some of these challenges. But yet, we have to do it in a very timely and quick manner because again, when these things occur, we have to be ready to act and be able to respond to the needs of our students. And that would hopefully be our result, that we, when we do this review cycle and put curriculum in place, that we have students who are prepared to embrace their future with confidence. So, that was a very brief overview. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about either fall workshop or the curriculum review process.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, board members' questions? Margaret?
Thanks, Mary, for the presentation. Um, can you talk to me more about this, what Mike Schmoker calls authentic literacy?
Right. That, it's more than just reading. It's reading, writing, listening and speaking. And like, in a more argumentative way to respond to questions, to do close reading.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I think it's, you really think about it, it's taking what you typically think about as reading and adding higher order thinking skills. You know, to where you're learning to critically analyze, you know, a piece of writing, or you're learning to critically write um, something, a, a review of something that you've read. It's not just the concept of, of um, getting the information, it's about engaging with the information. How can I create my own thinking around it?
Okay, thank you. Ellen?
So, I was looking at the review cycle. And one thing that stood out to me was that Copineros and Gifted were on at one point and then just kind of fall off.
Right. Yeah, and I'm not quite sure why that had happened. Um, Copineros did do a complete revision. And we added fifty percent Spanish literacy, fifty percent of English literacy. And so, then, at this point, I'm assuming they will come back in with the literacy portion as part of that.
And then the Gifted is, was that the clustering? Is that?
The flex grouping.
Flex grouping, okay.
Other questions for members? Fritz?
So, we were talking the other weekend, DCSDC, about innovation.
Right.
And this is a question about how the research phase has traditionally worked, or about how the research phase might work going forward. And the question that I wrote down as I was reading this the other day was, was or could be the research phase structured so that if somebody elsewhere in Minnesota or elsewhere in the U.S. were teaching a subject area in some radically unusual way, but that the evidence suggests was radically effective, would the research project, is the research process set up to catch such a thing? Would that get, it might not be implementable here under, easily.
Right, right, but more.
But would you notice?
Right, would we know about it?
Or, and could we notice if it's not currently geared toward that?
Right. It's um, more that we would do the research, look in the clearinghouse for what works. Um, research articles and research that comes out like in Ed Week and some of the journals. So, yes, we would see that. And, and you're right, we would look at it and go, "Yeah, that won't work here," or "That would work here if we did a little tweaking to it."
Fritz, you know, this is one of my concerns with the legacy process that we have. It is all a, um, we're looking at some very specific places. We're looking at some, um, sometimes some antiquated, you know, or some research that's old, um, because that's the best that we have at this point. Our current process doesn't necessarily take into account some new tools. For example, if you want to find best practices in um, whatever curriculum area, I would challenge you if you, if you are a person who uses something like Twitter, this is something I see every day. We're looking for kids who can do this well and you're using this kind of process. And you, it's amazing how your network cannot just be in Minnesota or in the country, but in an international way. And that's an example of a new kind of research piece. Now, do you take what the person says, the educator from Long Island says on Twitter as gospel fact? No, but what it is, is a clue for you to unlock. And now you create a relationship. And now you say, "Hey, can you share that with me? Can I now compare that to the What's Works clearinghouse? Can I look for other literature that might be about it?" Before, we were limited about what publishers would push to us. We have much more granular level of getting what's working in classrooms, not just from a summative level. And again, we wouldn't take what somebody, you know, said for, for gospel, but it's a way we can get at new ideas that were limited before because people were curating the ideas for us. We can now do that first-person research in a way, a- and I think there's some of that happening, but it is not part of our regular practice. And what really frustrates me is the length of time that we research. Our curriculum review process is excellent at a couple of things, one of which is admiring the problem. We admire the problem better than nearly anyone. And we need to shrink that. We do not have time. If you think about it, we won't review curriculum until a kid who's in kindergarten is in middle school. We cannot work that way in the twenty-first century anymore. It's just not good for our kids because we need them to be prepared to embrace their future. And in order to do that, we need to accelerate this. And I'm really excited for us to try to see, I don't know if Dr. Miles has applied his strategic planning process to the curriculum review, but we're gonna, we're gonna take a good look at it because as you have experienced, we can get a lot of good and thoughtful work done in a reasonable amount of time. And then spend more of the time figuring out, okay, how do we implement it? And what's the process? So, I, I think that this is a part, we have been limited by what someone else says. And I think we can have a more active role in researching what's the best, or actually, I would say, what's the next practice.
Right. And Dr. Miles was excited to talk with me about this and said, "Oh, yes, he'd be very happy to work with us on this process."
Of course he would.
Yeah. I don't know if, yeah, he'll get, send us a bill, but he did say that he would work with us through this, with the lens of curriculum review planning rather than strategic planning. And the other thing that I should mention is we are a member of the Minnesota Partnership for Collaborative Curriculum, which is a group of Minnesota schools who come together and actually write the curriculum. And it's, if you're a member, it's free. And it's online curriculum that is taught by teachers. Um, so, they have been developing various classes. And we will start having access to that and put that as part of our curriculum review process too. That instead of using the curriculum review process as a means to choose a basal reader, for example, or a textbook, that it would be more like, okay, what's out there? What's available to us on open source? What can we use? What do we already have available? What can we develop locally? As well as simply purchasing a book from a publishing company.
Okay, excellent. Um, other board members?
Sorry, I had a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Which is, i- what's your best case or your wish for uh, this revamp of the process?
I would like it in place by the end of this year. I mean, again, Bruce Miles.
So, we'll be hearing more about that as the year goes.
Yes. That, again, we don't want to admire the problem. These, these kiddos are only going to be in third grade this year. And so, we don't have time to spend admiring the problem. We need to move.
Other questions, board members have? Comments? Okay, thank you. I mean, it's great to, that we're, we're seeing what's currently being done, but um, far more exciting to hear where, where it's going. So, we'll look forward to having you back. Excellent, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so that um, concludes our items for, oh, no, we have one more item for discussion. And um, the uh, just some follow-up information regarding the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee and a couple of questions that were raised at our last um, board meeting. And um, Ellen, as part of the subcommittee, has offered to um, explain what was in your packet. Um, and um, we'll respond to any questions um, regarding the superintendent eval.
Sure. So, the subcommittee wanted to come back to the board with the two primary questions that came up at the last board meeting. One was the, the question of whether the board should consider um, a three sixty degree evaluation as part of the board superintendent evaluation. And then the second question was, were all of the items on the performance measures sufficiently visible to board members in ways that board members could provide ratings and describe evidence? Um, so, after hearing the board discussion, those questions, we got back together as a subcommittee and um, Board Chair Julie Pritchard had contacted MSBA on the three sixty degree evaluation. And so, what you have in, on the backside of the memorandum is something that comes from MSBA. And what you'll see in our memo is that we're actually recommending that the board not have a board three sixty degree evaluation. And that's after hearing what MSBA had to say and discussing it as a subcommittee, we thought was probably in the district's best interest for the board not to have a three sixty degree evaluation um, due to data, data privacy considerations and Minnesota's open meeting law. And you can, as I said, we've included in the board um, packet, the MSBA Management Services did a newsletter a few years back where they outlawed, or they outlined some of the um, challenges dealing with open meeting law and data privacy. And their past experience with boards that have chosen to go this route. And we appreciate that Dr. Hillman had said that he always, he's, he's been involved in three sixty, he's comfortable with that. But as, as the subcommittee felt like, as a board, we didn't think that that should be part of the board's um, evaluation of the superintendent, that that responsibility rests with us. Um, and that we can certainly, as, as members in the community, we are, we hear things. And that informs our thinking. Um, but that um, as a board, we didn't think that was probably the way we would recommend the subcommittee go with our recommendation. The second piece had to do with the um, the form itself. And none of us are thinking that this is going to be perfect. And once again, as we talked about last time, we think we need to revisit it in a year. But the thing that we hope that this helps with is that we changed the wording before. We had um, for these open comments that we said, "Provide evidence." And we were concerned that maybe by saying evidence, um, that that might mean different things to different people. And that, um, while we were viewing these things as Dr. Hillman being the CEO of our, our district in that role and that, eh, you know, the buck stops here sort of perspective. So, while um, certainly Val might be taking a strong leadership in finance, what we're doing is recognizing Dr. Hillman's leadership in these areas. So, you're, we thought by softening the language that we're not looking for evidence that Dr. Hillman was the doer, but that instead, what are our observations, interactions and overall knowledge related to the performance on these topics? And we hope that that might um, that might suit the board. Um, we guess are also saying that we don't necessarily think that we are going to get this right out of the chute perfect the first year, but we're really hoping that we've improved upon it. And that we would also say that we want to have as part of our process that we revisit whatever we adopt in one year. So, I think that outlines, so what we provided you was what I just described in terms of our recommendations, that additional information from MSBA. And then we had um, didn't need to include the, the full form with the new revision. And then the um, goals from Dr. Hillman, which have remained unchanged from the last board meeting. Um, so I guess what we were hoping is that we could hear questions from board members and then get a sense at the end of um, where the board stood. and then get a sense at the end of where the board stood in terms of more questions for the subcommittee, or whether the board might be ready to move forward.
So, board members' questions or comments on the subcommittee's recommendations? Rob, looks like you have a question.
Yeah, just on the, the MSBA opinion against 360-degree evaluations, they say, well, under the open meeting law, for example, it says, this will include performance data that's protected. The school board is then expected to address those negative comments in an open meeting. So there's a feeling that there's going to be negative comments that are not being publicly addressed. But if the public, if other groups are not involved, then there could equally be a suspicion that the board is just kind of, you know, pulling things out of their sleeves, that they're, that what, how does the public know what our criteria are for, for this, if we're the only ones privately making these decisions?
Go ahead, Ellen.
So I guess, I would say that that's what we had the form for, is the criteria, and that's why we're, part of the process is to make this more transparent by having the full timeline and, and the criteria in here, as, as these are the criteria that, as board members, we would be evaluating the superintendent. So there wouldn't be any secret criteria. This would, this would be exactly what each board member would be expected to use. I think what you're saying, though, is that how does anyone know that we're filling this out? Or that we're using this criteria?
Well, I, I mean, it's just kind of a closed group of people who are making, who are making this judgment without feedback from other groups. And it seems like there could be suspicion of that process if there isn't inclusion of other people. You know, this is, this, MSBA is saying there's going to be suspicion if there's negative feedback from the public that isn't addressed publicly. But, I mean, in either case, it's going to be private. And this is just a private process that includes fewer people, I guess.
Well, I, I think, actually, I'd spent some time, a great amount of time talking with Sandy Gudlach from MSBA. And I think what we have to realize is that, you know, one thing that we have to, to take into context is that we do, as a board, share the results of the superintendent's evaluation in an open school board meeting. So while we do the evaluation as board members, and as part of the process, I have that one-on-one meeting with Dr. Hillman that I present the results of the review process. Those are shared in an open school board meeting. And because any of that data that we were to collect in a 360-degree evaluation is part of, really, would, would fall under data privacy considerations. And even if we were to share that, it would have to be heavily redacted, because while those evaluators may have a viewpoint, they also may be bringing in other entities within that, those comments, and then that would be part of data privacy as well. And I think for what we have to look at is that, as a board, we have the broadest perspective of anyone in terms of the scope of the responsibility that the superintendent has, and the number of factors that weigh into any decision that any particular person who's filling out an evaluation may not have access to. So, for example, a stakeholder might not have the full, the full sense of why some decisions were made, or why, you know, or some factors that factored into a certain superintendent's decision, and ultimately, the performance on a particular evaluation criteria. So I think that we would be treading on some pretty uneasy ground for me in terms of having access to that data and needing to react to that potentially. I think that what we would create is some, we have never in our district done a 360-degree evaluation. And so as part of the, the process we've always followed, we, as board members, have, have done that evaluation as, you know, we've been the sole evaluators. But I think the other piece is that the, whatever somewhat, so, so it's not like it's expected within the district that other stakeholders would have, or would have, you know, input into the evaluation. What can happen then is if they have particular comments or want to address certain things, then there would be the feeling that the board would need to address those, so that you would create some, some potential conflict if they didn't feel that the board was directly addressing some of that, whereas the board would necessarily understand that there was a bigger picture. And that potentially their comments, while may be taken under consideration, we also would understand, again, we have the big broader picture, the 30,000-foot view of everything happening within the district and, and the superintendent's roles and responsibilities, and some of the background as to why a decision was being made that maybe a particular person filling out an evaluation may not have access to. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, I guess, there are just some questions like, establish as a professional and respectful working relationship with teachers and support staff. I think teachers and support staff are probably better at evaluating that than I am. So how do I get that information, other than saying, I think Matt's a good guy, and he gets along with people, so I'll give him a five, or whatever? That's not real data, really, from the people involved in that particular question.
So I guess, what I was, I guess, how I've seen the superintendent evaluation in the past is that these are not items where I, and I think that's part of the reason we went back to going away from data or evidence right here, is that what we're asking board members is your observations from your perspective of what you think, you see, that the visibility, the relationship. So it could be in a year we decide, well, we don't, we aren't as visible as we needed to be to how his relationships have been with teacher-staff. And, and that hasn't come up in board meetings, and our committee appointments don't give us that sort of visibility. And that's probably a problem, that's probably something we wouldn't want to remove. But I don't think it's a, I think you're right, that I, I don't, I won't know specifically what the elementary school teachers versus the secondary teachers or the staff. I, I won't be collecting data about that. But I will be, as a board member, observing what I think I see as the relationship. And I think that, that's, I guess, what we're saying the superintendent evaluation is about, is it's about the board's perspective on these pieces and our visibility to them. And if we're not visible to them, and we, or we're visible to them, and we see that it's a negative piece, then that's something we talk about in the evaluation. So I guess that's a kind of a difference in, in terms of, we're not expected to be collecting data on each of these pieces, but instead be providing, as a board member, our perspective and our visibility at that level. So I guess that's maybe the distinction, that, I guess, how I see the superintendent evaluation.
I think I'm fine with it. I mean, as long, if we're thinking of it kind of the way they were talking about Q Comp, that we try it, and we see how it works, and we evaluate our own evaluation after a year, so that we see what the problems were and what we need more information on, but.
And one of the ways in, in which we would know that some of these questions weren't functioning well would be if, if there's one where we don't have direct data, well, I'll take myself as an example. If there was one where I didn't have direct data, and furthermore, I didn't, I couldn't even think of experiences I'd have had over the course of years that allowed me to draw an intelligent inference about that. I just don't know how teachers feel about that, I don't know at all. I can't, I can't even guess that I would say, I just, I don't know, and put unable to answer. And people saying unable to answer would be good evidence that that question is not a good question, I guess.
Margaret.
I do have to agree that, and also, some of these, these sentences, I found a little, they seem to contradict themselves on the, the 360-degree evaluations written by MSBA. On the one hand, they're saying, the school board is then expected to address these negative comments. I don't agree. I don't think, if you're asking for someone for their impression about someone's job evaluation, that they would then expect you to address it in an open meeting. It's part of a job evaluation. And then under data privacy, they're saying the data created by the evaluations are considered to be government data. And as noted above, if a respondent includes comments about the superintendent's performance, the comments may be classified as private personal data. So it's sort of a contradictory statement. If they address, they expect you to address it at open meeting, but it's considered private and personal. But anyway, I, I do agree that a robust evaluation of any staff member should include some input from people who work with that person, regardless of where that is. I mean, if we call this the school board's evaluation of the superintendent, I'm all there. But when I look at questions like defines authority and area of responsibility for staff, I have no clue. Delegates responsibilities and authority to subordinates as appropriate, I don't know. And I know the way we do it is you, at our place, you would identify people who work with you that aren't in your department but are tangential to you, and they provide feedback to your supervisor as to your evaluation. I mean, it could be a random collection of, of impressions from unnamed staff, with just a rating scale, I don't know. But I do feel like to be really robust, it should include some opinions from the other outside of the school board, unless it is purely just the school board's evaluation. Then again, we may have to look at some of these questions and say, we can't really genuinely answer those without a lot more information, which may not fit data privacy.
Is there any other comments? Noel.
I've been doing evaluations for a long time with superintendents. And as a board member, I get any number of opinions on issues from the stakeholders, any number of opinions on all kinds of issues. But I also believe the stakeholders know who evaluates the superintendent, it's the school board. And they clearly share with me the thoughts that they have about the superintendent, where he could improve, where he's doing really well. And I take those notes seriously, because it's part of my job to hear from the community and to be able to integrate that information into evaluations of the superintendent who's leading the district.
Okay, thank you for those comments. So are there other comments?
Guess I would just like to, to weigh in and say that I appreciate Noel's comments. At the end of the day, the school board hires the superintendent, and the superintendent reports to the school board. And so I think that we, we need to be the sole evaluators of their performance. Again, because we, we do have, we have the broadest perspective of anyone, and we understand all the, the inner workings of all the decisions that are made. So I appreciate everyone's comments. I think that, I appreciate that we're all taking this very seriously. And I am not certain if we have anyone prepared to make a motion if we're comfortable moving forward with the approval of the superintendent evaluation and the superintendent's goals for 2016-17, or if we would like another opportunity to, to review this at our next board meeting.
For the people at home, I, I think it's really, from, from a personal point of view, saying that, you know, the change in the superintendent's provided an opportunity for the board to look at its process. And so, since I've been on the job for about 48 days, just to be clear for the people at home, that this is about the process.
Right.
In terms of that.
Thank you.
Hypothetical, right?
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Good point.
Okay, Rob.
This is actually, I guess, a question from Matt. Some of these questions, like articulates a vision and develops implementation, et cetera. I mean, if we were in a meeting with you to just come in with this and ask, ask you a couple of questions that we might be uncertain about, that we don't feel like we know, how you feel you've addressed those, and we can then compare what you think you've done to what we're observing. I mean, I think that just gives me a better, to hear from you in a, in a meeting, what you feel you've done, because then that gives me a sort of benchmark to look at as I'm filling this out.
I think one of the pieces about, is responding to board members. So of course I would respond, and, and we've known each other a long time, and I think, you know, I will always respond to questions from board members. And so if there's an area that you're saying you'd like some clarification, or you'd like my thoughts on, you know, I think that that is something that is certainly part of the process, because, you know, I, I meet with most of you one-on-one at least once a month, and if there's something that you're looking for clarification, I think that that would be perfectly appropriate to say, hey, can you help me out with this particular portion of it? Because some of that really will prob, could fly under the radar a bit. And so I think that that personal interaction is certainly a piece that you would use in that comments and observations area. And, you know, I look at any evaluation tool as an opportunity for the person in the position to grow, you know, and to get better. And my goal is to exceed your expectations. So those, that kind of feedback will be helpful. The most important thing to me will always be the comments. You know what I mean? Because that's where I can have a chance to see, as board members, where you're thinking, where, where being successful areas, that there are still room for opportunity to grow. And so I, I certainly would be open to having those kinds of discussions. And I think that was part of the concept behind changing the, the name behind, from evidence to something a little bit more broad.
Great, thanks for clarifying that. Okay, so any other comments? Or is, is the group potentially willing to move forward with approving this this evening as we go through items for individual action? Or are we wanting to have some further time to reflect on the changes we're proposing?
I didn't make any comment. Some of those questions that, that a board member doesn't have any clue on how to measure on that, I think should be kind of, get rid of them, or just, you know, like you said, how do you know? Why do you know? If it's not relevant to what a board member would know, and you're asking a board member that, then get rid of the question, or, or, you know, rephrase it. As far as, you know, others' opinion, and you have, you're, there's seven of us here. We're each one-seventh of Matt's boss. So we each have, we are the stakeholders. It's great if somebody has an opinion, or 10 people have opinions, great, thank you for hearing that. I'll take that under advisement. But we're one of seven. So you make up your opinion, write your evaluation, have your, your line of conversation. He's, he's the executive that leads the school district. So, I mean, that's pretty simple in my mind, anyway, so.
Other comments or questions? So is our, is, do we feel like we're willing to, or want to entertain moving forward with approving the superintendent evaluation form and the 2016-17 superintendent goals this evening?
I'll move it.
Okay.
You, you first have to have a motion to move it, add the, add the subject to the agenda.
So what would we be looking for? Because this is an item under discussion or reports, and we didn't know how the group would want to move forward. So if, we would need a motion to move the superintendent evaluation process and the superintendent's 16-17 goals to an item for individual action?
I'll move it.
Okay, moved by Noel, is there a second? Second by Margaret. Any questions on the motion to move this to an item for individual action? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will address that in the items for individual action, which we are actually moving towards right now. So our first item for individual action is the Q Comp letter of intent. Dr. Hillman.
So we have talked quite a bit about Q Comp, and we're now at just a point where looking at the board's comfort level and moving with the first step, which is the letter of intent. And so there is a copy of the letter of intent in your packet. And again, what I'm asking the board to consider would be whether or not they are comfortable with me signing the letter of intent. We would basically be looking at the options for all licensed members in the district. Initially, we would check yes for the levy, that does not bind us to that, but it, it's, it's a piece that we've been advised by the department. If you're thinking about it, you have to check that and-
If you're thinking about it, you have to check that and put the number ninety-one in there. I would sign it, and then one of the representatives from the association would sign it. Again, this is a step one. It's putting our toe in the water, so to speak. But this is what they require of us to begin with.
Okay, this is an item for individual action. So prior to discussion or questions, I'll ask if there's a motion to approve authorizing the superintendent to sign the Q Comp Letter of Intent on behalf of the Northfield Public Schools. Is there a motion?
To move it.
Moved by Rob. Is there a second? Second by Fritz. Any discussion or questions? Fritz? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I'm very excited about the opportunity for peer coaching and mentoring, and it seems like the risks are all potential risks. And so the leverage of risk to benefit is just wonderful.
Okay, excellent. Other comments or questions? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second item for individual action is the Dundas Dome rental negotiations. Dr. Hillman, we have reviewed this to, in two prior board meetings.
Multiple times.
Multiple. So prior to asking questions or discussion, is there a motion to approve the superintendent and activities director to negotiate a rental slash lease of the Dundas Dome for a cost not to exceed forty thousand five hundred dollars? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alan. Any discussion or questions? Noel?
I have a question regarding the amount where, about, just here on the page.
The grid.
Next to the last paragraph where it says the industrial property value at a million five is forty-seven dollars. Per month, per year?
Per year.
For six months?
For a year.
For a year. Thank you.
And that was just in the, in a previous piece, I had handed out the attached annual tax impact. So I should have said per year again down there. My apologies on that lack of detail.
No problem. That's why we're here.
Other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item number three of the items for individual action is the proposed two thousand sixteen payable two thousand seventeen property tax levy. And here to give us background on that is Director of Finance Val Merkstar. And as a reminder, there was a copy on the PowerPoint in your packets.
Go under Windowbell. Slideshow.
All right, I used a Mac. I know you're proud.
Yes.
So, good evening. This is not a presentation that you've heard three or four times. The same presentation, just different numbers, I guess. But I will keep it brief since we're getting late in the night here and leave enough time for questions. So this is just the preliminary levy certification. We have historically certified at the max. And basically, that means, yes, we'd like as much as we have authority to, and we can always under levy between now and December when we finalize it, if we choose to do that. So just a little, what is the levy? What does it do for us? It does provide twenty-one percent of our overall budget, and that is just our general fund budget. It is one hundred percent of our debt service budget and about seventeen percent of the community services budget. So it is a significant portion for us. It does include voter-approved levies as well as state authorized levies. And it really allows us to be the district that we are today and provide all of that quality programming that we have. And just a little background on the timeline. We have to certify this by September thirtieth and send the information to the county. The county then prepares all of the tax statements. Those get mailed out in November. That's usually about the time my phone starts ringing. And then we do the final certification at our December twelfth board meeting. We do the truth and taxation meeting in conjunction with our regular board meeting. And then the county can prepare their final, final tax bills that go out for the next calendar year. And the levy and budgeting year don't line up quite right. The levy year for counties is January through December. School districts are July through June, which obviously aligns with our school year. So we do get our first payments from the pay seventeen levy in May and June, but we essentially have to defer that revenue until July and line it up with our budget here. And just a reminder, the levy is kind of a five-year process. It's, we're certifying it now, but it's not really revenue till next year. And it includes adjustments for about three years. So it can take a while for everything to flush out. So this is what it looks like just as a percentage in total. It's about, just a little over fifteen million. Thirty-four point seven of that is our voter-approved referendum. The twenty-six point one is just the other general fund items, which are primarily our capital voter-approved levy and the seven hundred and fifty thousand, and then all the other miscellaneous state-approved levies. And the general debt service is another thirty-two percent. I'll just get into capital levies up there, four point eight. And then community services is at two point six. So that is the accumulation of the fifteen million. Apparently I have some fancy stuff going on. Didn't know about that. So this is what it looks like by fund. These are the categories that we are required to share with the community so that they have questions on it. These are consistent categories across the state. So you can see I've included what our proposed levy is, what we certified last year, and then if there was an increase, decrease, and a percent change. As you can see, we are looking at a point-two percent increase, which is thirty-three thousand dollars. So we're essentially keeping it flat. It would be extremely minimal for the taxpayers, which is, which is a great thing. Do have, we do have a little bit of changing between the funds. The general fund is going down just slightly, and the debt service is going up slightly. There's a lot of moving parts that go into all of those numbers. And so I've picked kind of just a couple of items to call out of what's causing the most significant changes. So if you look on the voter-approved, that's increasing two hundred and forty thousand dollars roughly, or two point four percent. That is primarily an increase in the debt service. So you can see up there, it's going up about one hundred and ninety-six in the debt service. That is, this February, we'll be paying off the Bridgewater Building Bond. And as a way to kind of maintain consistency for the voters so we weren't swinging five hundred thousand up and down depending on when our bonds were being paid off, they accelerated, we accelerated the payment schedule for the middle school bond for the following year. So beginning in fiscal seventeen, we will start paying a higher amount annually for the middle school bonds to get those paid off within the timeframe that we were scheduled for. So that's why it maintained, you know, two hundred thousand dollars on five million is pretty level for what the taxpayers would see on their annual tax payments. So that's primarily what the voter-approved increase is. It does also include the increase, we have an inflationary increase on the referendum, so that plays slightly into it as well. The other is actually going down two hundred and six thousand or three point eight percent. And that is primarily due to the operating capital. We will be getting the same amount in total, but the state actually changed the formula with the voluntary pre-K program so that there will be more coming in aid and less in levy. So it's just kind of a tax break for our taxpayers. And so that all, that's out to the thirty-three thousand. But lots of moving parts within all of those. And then this is just kind of a historical perspective, so you can see where we've been. Pretty consistent overall. We went down point-two last year, up point-two this year. But if you look at the five-year, the district has actually averaged a decrease of point-five-two percent over the last five years. So just the most notable changes. The long-term facilities maintenance, which I've talked about a couple of times, is by far probably our biggest change. Last year was the first year, and if you recall, we saw about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than we had the previous year. For fiscal seventeen, we're looking at an additional three hundred and ten over last year. So two hundred and fifty last year, three hundred and ten this year. So over five hundred thousand dollars more available for us to address all of our day-to-day maintenance and ongoing costs for those sorts of things. The Uniform General Education Levy is being phased out. We got about eighty thousand last year. It's about thirty thousand this year. So that was about a fifty thousand dollar decline. This fiscal sixteen was the last year of our health and safety program. So the next three years will be kind of flushing out all those adjustments and finalizing the revenue we got and the expenditures we saw. And I already touched on the operating capital. And then the lease levy, just a note, was actually about four thousand dollars more than the pay sixteen levy. And that is including the change from the one, the one lease that we shared with the joint powers with Faribault to now having three sites under the co-op and the way that that cost is shared with the four districts. So that was a positive note, that the cost was really similar. So just in summary, point-two percent increase, thirty-three thousand dollars. We do have the inflationary increase. And the long-term facility maintenance is a big boost for us, and we can carry over those funds and use them for some long-term planning. And that's about it. The total levy is fifteen thousand five eighty-one two eighty-five sixty-seven.
Million.
Million, yes. And we are, we're just proposing to certify at the max. So I will take any questions you have on that.
Again, very thorough and always very, for the most part, we seem to be able to follow it, so that's all good.
Well, that's impressive at nine-thirty at night.
Okay, so board members, this is an item for individual action. So if we could have a motion to certify the county auditors the two thousand sixteen payable, two thousand seventeen proposed certified net tax levy at the maximum authority amount of fifteen million five hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Fritz. Okay, questions, comments, or either Dr. Hillman or Val? Ellen?
So just a point of clarification. This does not include the Dundas Dome rental agreement?
It does not.
And that's a piece that, because of the timing of this, we will, we can always lease levy one year in arrears, and so it will be part of next year's levy. Should we move forward with it?
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Val.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next item for individual action is the charter school authorization mission and vision. Dr. Hillman?
So in your packets, I've included a couple of pieces that are part of the process for us to renew our status as a charter school authorizer. And as you recall, we made application to the state last spring, winter and spring. And then we were tenderly approved with what nearly every provider has, a corrective action plan. You have one year to complete that corrective action plan from the time that you get the letter from the state, which we got in March. So this is the first of a few steps that I'll be asking you to help me with to bring that to fruition. One of the things that they required us to do is to have a mission and vision specific to our charter school authorizer status. You have to remember that the rules are really designed for those people who are, those organizations that are single-purpose authorizers. But we have to follow the same rules for right now that all of the single-purpose authorizers do. We've tried to make the fair argument that our mission and vision, as they currently exist, would apply to this. And we've been told that, no, we need to make sure that we have a mission and vision specific to our authorizing capacity. So we have written two very basic statements that cover, because we are looking to only authorize charter schools within our district boundaries, and that is how we have framed the mission and vision. Part of the corrective action plan included that we would ask you as a board to approve this portion of our school, really a mission and vision that's specific to our authorization. And I have included also a screenshot of the new website that you're seeing that we are going to probably launch later this week, or at least make available to the department.
Excellent. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the district's charter school authorization mission? Mission and vision as presented. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Rob. Questions or comments? Okay, seems pretty straightforward. Excellent to see the website that you've been describing. So we have a motion and a second. No further questions or comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we will add for item for individual action, item number five, which would, is there a motion to approve the superintendent evaluation form? Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Margaret. Questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the superintendent evaluation form, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. As part of a second item for individual, or is the sixth item for individual action, I will ask for a motion to approve the superintendent goals for two thousand sixteen seventeen. Is there a motion to approve the goals? Moved by Margaret. Is there a second? Second by Fritz. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the superintendent goals for two thousand sixteen seventeen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that takes care of items for individual action. We'll move now to items for consent grouping. Is there anything anyone wished to pull from the consent grouping? I just wanted to make a comment and recognize Sibley PTL for their sixty-two hundred dollar contribution for classroom funding for the teachers. Sibley Elementary School has done that for a number of years. And we recognize that a significant amount of sixty-two hundred dollars required a lot of fundraising and effort, and we really appreciate that. So is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Alan. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will move on to items for information. Our first item, Board Policy two-ten-point-one Charter School Authorization Conflict of Interest. Language in our packets. Dr. Hillman?
This is one of the other pieces that the state is requiring. Our current board conflict of interest policy does not, the department does not feel is substantial enough to cover the items specific to authorization. So I've included in your packet, first reading, a charter school authorizer conflict of interest policy that we know they have approved for another school, or another charter school authorizer, I should say.
Excellent. Okay, so.
And this is just the first reading, so we.
So then I would anticipate at the October tenth meeting, we would come back and approve this as an item for individual.
That's what I would be asking you to consider.
So as everyone has a chance to reflect on this, if there's any questions, you can get to Dr. Hillman prior to our next board meeting. Next item for information, Strategic Planning Process Update. Dr. Hillman?
So as you know, we had a work session last Thursday, a full three-hour session that we used every nook and cranny of it pretty well. And we are very close to bringing you back some information about asking to approve the formal vision, any tweaked mission. any tweaked mission that the administration might make some suggestions for, and some near-term priorities. Obviously, with the meeting being on Thursday night, we didn't have the time to turn this around for you. But we'll be working on that this week, and we anticipate having a draft for you at the October 10th board meeting. I do want to just share with you one piece of data. At the end of the day, 186 different people will have participated in the strategic planning process. That is highly unusual in terms of physical people who attended a meeting. And I think we should be really proud of the inclusiveness that we've had in bringing a variety of stakeholders, including those people whose first language is not English, into this mix. I am very proud of the work that's been done, and I'm really proud of what we're going to bring forward to you to help provide us focus in our decision-making moving forward. So just to give you, I thought, you know, at the beginning, I told you that it would be quite a few people. I think 186 inclusive of the board is pretty darn good. So thank you for everyone's participation in that.
Excellent. Is there any comments or board members? Okay. Excellent update. We'll look forward to that, further discussion in our next meeting. Next item for individual action, Every Student Succeeds Act regional meetings. I think a number of you, I think as board members, we all got this email. But I thought it was just interesting to highlight it for, for any board members who might be interested in going to one of the regional meetings to hear more about this legislation, conveniently one in Burnsville on November 3rd. So, Dr. Hillman, did you have any comments on this?
Well, I think that you're going to start to see there's quite a bit of chatter from the department about its implementation of the Every Student Succeeds Act. And this is part of the process of making sure that the, of the public is informed. And this was specifically sent to school boards and to superintends for their participation in the process. I've sat in, I did, there was a webinar, they actually periscoped something that was kind of neat. It's a little iPhone app that you can live broadcast. And so I got, I've gotten to watch a couple of meetings via that. So I do think the department is really trying to get out and ask for people's opinion on the Every Student Succeeds Act. And we'll have some more information about that this fall.
Excellent. So if something, someone's interested in, we can be sure to mark your calendar. The next item for information, the National Merit Scholars Reception, as you know, is at our, prior to our next board meeting on Monday, October 10th at 6:00 PM. And we have now the finalist.
We have names.
Finalists and commended scholars. So drumroll and.
Yes, so we're, we're very pleased again to have ten total students recognized through the National Merit Scholarship Program. We have six students who are considered commended scholars. And those students are Kate Bornhauser, Eric Getzel, Jackson Hillman, Robert Copus, Hoken Larson, and Zachary Vanderwood. And the students who are our semifinalists, again, as you have heard the presentation from Joel Evergier, this is a very, this is an extremely high level of academic skill. We want to congratulate Alex Gunn, Lars Ripley, Irene Stowland, and Kristoff Zweifel. And there will be the reception on October 10th at the High School Upper Cafeteria.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, so if you, oh, and then the Bus Driver Appreciation Breakfast hosted by Principal Nancy Antoinette Bridgewater and her staff, Friday, October 28th, from 8:20 till 9:00 AM in the Bridgewater Cafeteria. And if any board members are able to make that event, it's, it's a great one. And it's a really wonderful opportunity to thank our everyday heroes. Dr. Hillman, did you want to add to that?
There's always good food. Bus Driver Appreciation Breakfast, so.
Yeah, good point. Come hungry.
Well, and you can think about it, our bus drivers are typically, in a lot of cases, the first person to see a student in the morning. Many times the last person to greet them as they leave the day. And the relationships that they form with students are really important. And one of the best parts of this piece is the, Bridgewater students typically write thank you cards to their bus drivers. And if you watch the response that the bus drivers have to that, it's of incredible gratitude. And so I think that that's an important piece that we're teaching our kids to be grati- to have gratitude for the people who are providing them a service. And of course, we can just not say enough about Benjamin Buss and the work that they do for us.
Okay, good. Thank you. So future meetings, we have just said it a couple of times, but just for one last review. Reception for the National Merit Scholars is Monday, October 10th at 6:00 PM in the Northfield High School Upper Caf, followed by our regular school board meeting at 7:00 PM in the High School Media Center. Monday, October 24th is our next regular school board meeting for the month of October, also at 7:00 PM in the High School Media Center. So coming right under the wire of 10:00 PM, I ask for a motion that we adjourn.
I'll move it.
Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.